...in the general area of the property which is the subject of Paul Schultz's applications. I have also of my own choice spoken in the past in support of the application in Polk County Board of County Commission hearing in August 2016 regarding a separate land use matter involving extension of times and noise levels for the Outback Oasis. Even though I can and will participate and vote fairly in this case based on the evidence presented through the City Commission at the public hearing on this matter, it is an important part of the due process to minimizing any parents and any conflict of interest. Mr. Chikado?
Due to a potential conflict, I will be standing from the vote and we'll fill out the proper paperwork.
Okay. Okay, so now let's begin. We're, um, this is a public hearing. I'll start with the City Attorney, Mr. Matt Talone, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Ordis, for O-19-08. An ordinance amended for the Land Use Act 2025 American Conference of Florida by advising the future land use map series by a residential low density and neighborhood activity center future land uses beforehand parcels. The building of this is a conflict with providing other interest factors, discriminer's errors, and providing a companion. General location, four parcels generally located on west side of Country Club Road, approximately 1,700 feet south of Hamilton, 20 minutes east. The area covered by this request is 69.2 plus or minus seven. And, uh, okay, this is only a middle hearing, which is not to vote and not to transmit procedures. You know, it's to the Department of Economic Opportunity. This is not the adoption stage for not voting to adopt anything tonight. So you're not making any findings, legislature or otherwise. You're simply voting to allow us to be transmitted for state agency review.
Okay, City Attorney.
The mayor's city commissioners. The petitioner proposes to develop this, the subject area with an aging in place concept which includes a mixture of residential uses marketed to individuals over age 55. Uses would include a combination of detached active adult residences, attached low-rise condominiums, or townhouses, and an assisted living facility. To support these residential uses and other nearby residential uses, a small 9.3 acre neighborhood commercial area will be provided near the development intersection of Country Club Road and includes the existing Outback Oasis event venue that is envisioned to continue and support the aging in place community as recreation and open space. To facilitate development in subject area to improve overall traffic circulation in this heart of the city, the petitioner proposes to dedicate runway to allow for the future extension of Sage Road to Country Club Road. The runway is generally located along the western edge of the subject area near the old Sage Road, Sage Road landfill, and then extends eastward, south of an existing pond located on the northern portion of the property. No habitable structures or structures could be developed over the old landfill outer the space may be used for parking and/or recreation. The request that pod addresses the following development criteria, specific land uses, development timing, building setbacks, height, landscaping, noise, transportation requirements, and signage. All of these requests contain a large scale future land use map amendment reviewed by the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state and local agencies is required, which is the subject of the action that you're taking the seeming to transmit. Our staff has denoted the surrounding land uses. The, with respect to subdivisions, crossroads of Lake Region, Country Club Estates, Country Walk of Winter End, Gates of Lake Region, Hamilton Point, Hamilton West, Hamilton Club. The public infrastructure analysis has been provided based on 56.1 acres of residential low density and 9.3 acres of neighborhood activity center future land uses. 3.8 acres will be reserved for stage road extension up to a maximum of 560 residential units, 202,554 square feet in commercial space. And then, of course, a pile of water and sewer, sufficient capacity in cities and utility system for water and sewer would exist to accommodate this particular development. Continuing in the body of the fact sheet, we have denoted a number of trips that we feel would be projected or similar to this development. With respect to the comprehensive plan, the subject area is designated as Polk County Residential Low. The request of 56.1 acres of residential low density future land use represents the most compatible city future land use to the existing Polk County future land use. We've included the table which illustrates the developed residential densities of subdivisions located within one line of the subject parcels, and those are included for your review. We have denoted the road classification of Country Club Road. Furthermore, the request of 9.3 acres of neighborhood activity future land use is designated or is designed part of to provide a location for supporting neighborhood commercial uses as expressed by future land use element policy 1.5.9A of the transportation element. Without the proposed neighborhood activity center, the nearest commercially designated area to the subject parcel is about 1.3 miles away at the corner of Country Club Road and Dundee Road. Close proximity of some supporting services will potentially reduce the number of trips using surrounded roadway network. With respect to notification, public notification requirements for this request, in addition to the city's official notice of these requests, the petitioner held an advertised neighborhood meeting December 13, 2018. Six nearby residents attended the neighborhood meeting and expressed concerns relating to noise and traffic. The petitioner also nailed out a fact sheet to the residents of the Hamilton Point subdivision. A conclusion has been provided in reviewing the petitioner's request. Following conclusions have been denoted. You want me to read all those? I mean, they're denoted as a matter of public record. The public is, of course, welcome to review those and read those. If that's the Zaret City Commission, I will, but, you know, they're duly noted.
Yeah, those are duly noted.
Right up there on the screen.
I see anybody shaking their head, yes.
Yeah, we have the department records as far as you all have them for this time.
That's right.
With respect to financial impact, we do not have a financial impact denoted at this time. With respect to revenue and expenses, the planning commission recommendation at its January 3, 2019 regular meeting voted to recommend approval of these requests. There were 13 public comments which included one opposing the request and two generally supporting the request. Concerns raised by those opposing included traffic on Country Club Road, noise, building heights, compatibility of uses, crime, and a lack of need for this type of development. Following the planning commission meeting, staff met with the petitioner to discuss issues raised during the planning commission public hearing. On further consideration of the public comments, the petitioner offered changes designed to further minimize the offsite impacts from their request. Those are denoted in the fact sheet, and again, they are available for the public view. I can read those if they have to be written into the record, but the fact sheet is part of the public record. It's the wish of the City Commission. How do you want me to proceed?
Mr. Attorney. Do you determine if it's necessary?
Uh, it's not absolutely necessary because again, we draw timely reporting. It's already included in the website and the gentleman that published and advertised to the general public, so it's part of the record.
Okay. Let me keep moving on.
Staff recommends the City Commission approve ordinance O-19-08 on first reading and transmit to the Florida Department of Economic Opportunity and other state and local agencies for review and approve the companion zoning ordinance O-19-09 on first reading.
Thank you. Gentlemen? Yes. O-19-08, public hearing, and transmit it to the EEO. Okay, we have a motion to approve O-19-08. So I'm going to close the public hearing, or the City Commission meeting, open the public hearing. This is how we're going to do things. We have a process here. We allow the applicant to come forward and start, start off and present what they're asking for, then we're going to allow anybody who wants to speak, and I've got several people that would like to speak. We're going to allow them to come forward after the fact. You'll have five minutes, and the way we do this, when we have this many speaking, I'm going to call speaker's name. I don't want to call the second person's name who's on deck, so to speak. We're going to ask them to come down and sit, and that way we can move things through a little bit quicker. And, you know, of course, you're going to have five minutes, but you don't have to use your whole five minutes out of, you know, time to respect your, for your neighbors, but you can take it all. So, but if you'll just allow this process to work through, everybody will get their chance, and we'll let anybody leave that wants to speak that hasn't had time to speak. So with that, I'm going to call up the first person.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioner. My name is Kent Horn. I am representing the applicant, Paul Schultz, tonight. I want to let you know that Mr. Schultz is in the audience tonight as well as members of our team. And after a short presentation, I would, at the commission's approval, allow a couple of these consultants to hit some key points to provide you with some additional information. As you are aware, we're here for two items tonight, the transmit of the Florida Future Land Use Map Amendment to the state, as well as the future PUD ordinance request, and we're here tonight to provide you with additional information and clarification regarding these issues. About five years ago, Paul Schultz purchased his property across the street from his former residence of Country Club Road and started the development of the Outback Oasis, the county garden, and event facility, and has been functioning that way ever since. What we have been doing for the last year since Paul initially began talking with me, we approached the city and began to look at ways to utilize this property, and in particular, to utilize two aspects of it. First, the existing Outback Oasis. We wanted to find a home for that in the long term. For those of you who have not been to Outback Oasis, it is a beautiful garden and event facility that is truly a gem within the city of Florida. And we have been looking for a way to allow those gardens and facilities to be used long term as a part of the community. So as we went through this, we ended up coming up in several terms and several ideas, of which we could finally become very, very positive about creating an area for assisted living facility and for age restricted senior community as well. This site used to be the city landfill, approximately 14 acres of the site was the old landfill. And during the last five years, in addition to constructing and developing the Outback Oasis, Mr. Schultz has reclaimed the area, he's added additional fill onto the former landfill, he has planted native plants, he's done wetland restoration, and has really made this site something that no one probably would have thought it would, it could be during the times of the landfill. So we are looking not only for a home for the Outback Oasis as a centerpiece for this future community, but also for a reuse of the landfill itself. Upon approaching the city, we were soon to find out that the comprehensive plan calls for the extension of Sage Road through this property to Country Club Road. And we have supported that because we understand the comprehensive plan's desire for traffic interconnectivity, and we feel like those are key items that are beneficial to all residents of the area. We also came to the conclusion through a number of studies and phone calls that there really is a need for assisted living facilities in this community. Everyone we called had a waiting list or was turning people away. There is a need in this community for assisted living facilities. So our, our design is to create an aging in place community. This is a concept that has been in place for a number of years and allows for people who may no longer be able to stay in a single family home to move to a villa or condominium that might allow them to have their hands free. It also gives them the opportunity, if one spouse or another might be in need of assisted living facility or memory care or other medical type assistance, that they could live very closely to that community and also be able to visit them on a regular basis. The idea of this project is to allow people to stay within their community, whether they live close to this site or maybe not so close, but be able to be close to their families, to their friends, to their social interaction, and that's the basis of the aging in place community. The staff has prepared an extensive oral report over all of those, but I did think it was worthwhile for me this evening to provide you with some of the concessions that we have made following the planning board meeting. We want everyone to understand that we have listened to the concerns, and we have tried our best to create a compromise with some of these concessions. We have reduced our unit count to 400 units. That's a 20% reduction from our initial request. We have agreed to a maximum of, excuse me, a minimum of 40% open space so that as you drive down Sage Road, you will have a similar experience of times in open space as you do in the area now. And we have agreed to no outdoor amplified sound. We have agreed to this because we think that it makes sense for the neighbors, and we feel like by the approval of this development plan, that we can create an indoor facility that will allow those kinds of dinners and receptions to occur without any impact on the surrounding neighbors. Another area of concern from the residents were the building heights. We have agreed and have added to the ordinance that we will construct no buildings greater than two stories within 500 feet of Country Club Road. In addition, on the southeast corner of the property, there's a small area adjacent to a couple of neighbors. We have agreed to a 300-foot setback from those corners which puts it up against a stand of trees to further buffer them and also provide that limited in height so that if you drive down Country Club Road, you will only experience heights of buildings some of them are there now. We've also agreed to reduce our request from overall five stories for the assisted living facility itself to a maximum of three stories. Sage Road is a major concern, and we want to point out that we are providing at no cost to the city. We are willing to donate or facilitate a way for the entire area between the Country Club Road and the existing Sage Road connection in the south of the property. And we agreed to construct that portion of Sage Road within the Schultz property on a phase basis as construction goes through, so before the completion of the project, the road would be built. Now, there is obviously a chance that there may be some public funding, some state funds that might be available to help with the completion of all Sage Road, and we reserve the right, the federal money or state money could come available, but we could also utilize that for partial completion. But we would still agree to make that happen. We've also been, people have been concerned about traffic along Country Club that might be generated by this project, and we agreed to direct all construction activity to the Sage Road entrance so as to keep that off the hook. And we will also, as time proceeds and things get built, we would also try to direct and help any emergency vehicles to also access this site from Sage Road. The truth is, there is, there will be an intersection of Country Club and Sage, but that is to the collector road of Sage Road, and then side roads will off to the individual neighborhoods. So nothing is running directly onto Country Club Road. In terms of the neighborhood activity center that is requested as a part of this, we want to point out that the neighborhood activity center was created as a part of the community to help provide a home for the Outback Oasis. It was the most logical category to allow this approximately five and a half acres of the 9.3 that is called for in this request is already the existing Outback Oasis facility. So we're only talking about the smaller areas, not the full 10 acres. We have agreed to reduce our request from 50,000 square feet to 40,000 square feet, a 20% reduction. And we've also agreed that there will be, we will restrict the square footage that would be built on this area to 8,000 square feet of Outback Oasis related facilities. This is where we talk about the linear building to house, a bank hall, or meeting hall. But these would all be restricted to just those activities with the Outback Oasis until such time as the full Sage Road connection is made. In other words, that neighborhood activity center, other than Outback Oasis, if the connection all the way through to the, to Dundee Road, if it never gets improved, then that activity center can never be built. We really are trying to front this development onto the future Sage Road so as to allow that traffic to go out to the traffic light at the corner of Sage and Dundee. That is our, that is our goal. We've also agreed to restrict any retail development to a minimum of, a maximum of 4,000 square feet or vendors sent at any time in the future. Neighborhood activity center, when we look at these aging in place communities, they are basically support facilities for the assisted living facility. They became, they become doctor's office, dentist office, insurance agents, physical affairs, those sort of activities, and those would not come into play until six, five, nine, or the project is further developed, and there's actually a population living on site that could justify this to me. We appreciate the opportunity to present these to you, and at this point, I would like to bring up to the podium Ray Stangle, who's our civil engineer, and have him speak to you. I would also probably need to say that I am a registered advanced architect and land planner and have been developing community land plans for almost 40 years, and so I am experienced in this area.
Thank you. Ray Stangle, Jordan Engineering Group, Oregon, South Orange, Alabama, 1550 S, Land District, Florida. I am a registered professional engineer in the state of Florida. I received my degree from University of Central Florida in civil engineering, and I've been practicing as both a public engineer and a private engineer throughout my career, about about 33 years of design in accessing 50 million miles of roadways in the Osceola County area. I've focused my general practice in Orange Osceola and Polk County. Couple things I just wanted to address, and I'll keep it short. There's some concerns at the planning commission meeting about stormwater management flooding in the area. While we haven't addressed that at this stage, this is just the zoning stage, there are rules and regulations in place by both the Southwest Florida Water Management District and the City of Winter Haven whereby we have to abide by regulations to ensure that we do not adversely impact our neighbors with our stormwater management and that we accept any stormwater management and stormwater runoff that comes into the property. These female flood elevations have been established in this area, so the good news is, there's a lot of good hydraulic, hydrology information available to us to utilize to ensure that we design the site properly and that both your staff and Southwest Florida Water Management District has good technical information to ensure that we use them. The other concern that was raised was the connection of Sage Road to Country Club Road. Your comprehensive plan shows this as an alignment, a future alignment that is a preferred alignment in this area, and it basically connects through our property, extends up from Dundee, goes through our property and ties into Country Club on the outside of a curve. And we've looked at both the design speed of Country Club Road and Sage Road, and we have prepared the traffic impact study to determine the lengths of the turn lanes that are needed. We've prepared preliminary drawings using available information, the property crazer's map, and materials and things like that to ensure that that connection at the point we're proposing is a proper one, that you can get all the tapers in, where we taper for the turn lanes, and we have the proper storage for the, for the turn lanes, and most importantly, that we have proper site distances for folks exiting out of our property and folks turning into our property off of Country Club Road. And as we proceeded through the design process, we've been sharing that information with your staff, but I just wanted to be here to tell you that we have looked at that in more detail in a normal running application to ensure that the location shown in your comp plan is, is a, is a good location for this connection. Thank you.
That's right. Good evening, Mr. Commissioner, we'll have a traffic availability consultants. I'm Almazorga, 3101, with Water Boulevard, Orlando, Florida, 32803. Also a registered professional engineer. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer, and my specialty is traffic engineering. We prepared, we've prepared a traffic study for this, for this application, and the traffic study was followed with the city. Essentially, the, the transportation network in this area is, was determined to be sufficient in capacity to accommodate the proposed development program. As a matter of fact, the traffic study had assessed a development program that was a little bit more intense, intensive than what the applicant is currently agreeing to do. In addition to that, beyond that, we looked at what would a development of, equivalent development of a land if it were marketed residential development type. And what we found is comparing trips from that versus what the applicant is proposing, which is an age restricted, aging in place community, those tend to have lower impacts. Although they're requesting a high number of units, the trip generation on them is significantly less. About two-thirds of the traffic is generated by the proposed use versus equivalent development of 200 units of regular residential units there. Finally, we, we also did a, just a very high level look at what would, basically what would happen with Sage Road coming in, although we didn't do specific modeling, but just from experience and having been in this field for 23 years and looking at how we connect networks, what you would expect to happen with Sage Road coming in there, Sage Road becomes the funnel that takes the traffic off of Country Club back to the line at Dundee Road. So the connection to Sage Road and the timing of the more intensive uses that are proposed here really mitigate any potential impact of Country Club Road. With that, I'll give it back to Mr. Dugg.
Good evening, Mr. Dugg, Bob Wood, representing Paul Schultz in this matter. And at this stage in the process, I just want to address several issues that arose during the planning board meeting, and there were primarily concerns of the residents. I think it's important to look at those particular issues, and again, not in detail. It's really premature for that, that to come later. But one is the issue of compatibility. At the winter end of the planning board meeting, we heard again and again, concerns of citizens talking about the compatibility of this aging in place community with the surrounding residential subdivisions. And it's important in understanding what compatibility is in the land use context is to look at the definition of it. And the definition, incidentally, Polk County's ordinance has a definition, a variety of cases that are reviewed throughout the state of Florida has adopted this definition of compatibility, and I think it's important. And I think it's important, that definition is, a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist in relative proximity to each other in a stable fashion over time, such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted correctly or indirectly by another use or condition. So compatibility talks about coexisting. Compatibility talks about the impact of these different land uses on the other. And in this particular project, of course, we're talking about an aging-in-place community, and they'll be evidence submitted during the course of the public hearings relating to all those various issues, because compatibility is an issue that you have to look at a number of specific things, some of which maybe the residents in the area could express concern about. For example, intensity, the type of use, the general appearance, odors, noise, smoke, vibration, traffic generation, and nuisances. All of these are kind of the underlying considerations of whether or not a particular use is compatible. And we believe that an aging-in-place community is compatible with existing uses based on what has been proposed in this particular case. Another issue that arose is mine, and I'll address it just very simply. There were several comments made that Mr. Schultz had applied for the same sort of thing in the county, that it was rejected, that his motive in annexing it to the City of Winter Haven was really taking advantage of the applicant. I was involved in that application in 2016, started in the spring, culminated in a public hearing in August of 2016, and this was the issue in that case. His property, only the Outback Oasis parcel, was subject to this particular application. Its land use at the time was recreation, low intensity, which meant that you can only have daytime events, and there couldn't be any more than 250 attendees. And Mr. Schultz wanted to increase that. He wanted to have nighttime events. He wanted to be able to increase the number of people who can enjoy Outback Oasis. Therefore, he applied for conditional use for recreation, high intensity. That fell before the county commissioner, but again, it had nothing to do with the application that he's making before the City of Winter Haven that encompasses nearly 70 acres and is requesting this type of community that is really in the vanguard of what we're seeing in the United States is an express need in many sectors. Mr. Murphy earlier talked about the quasi-judicial nature of what ultimately this commission is going to have to decide. And that simply means is that this commission, in quasi-judicial capacity, has to listen to the evidence, and it has to be substantial competent evidence, and make the determination based on the law, the land uses, the staff has provided, you and the city attorney has provided as well. And in fact, they're not expected to nation, they're not about the fear of devaluation of land, they're not about any of those things. That has to be presented in terms of evidence. Somebody who is an expert can make those sort of assessments. Many can testify as to the beauty of the area and those sorts of issues, but not traffic counts. Only experts can do that. So with that, because it is a quasi-judicial proceeding, we have not initiated any contact with the city commissioners in Donovan to do so. However, Mr. Schultz and his team, that were very closely with the city for months on end, beginning with overall general concepts and narrowing it down to something that your staff leaves in and has approved. And not only that, that the Winter Haven Planning Commission, that it lasted several hours, Mr. Schultz listened to the concerns of the residents and notwithstanding the fact that he was making these significant modifications, did it with the intent of satisfying everybody in the area that this was a big project for Winter Haven and everyone else's concern. And your facts sheets have it, he made nine substantive, substantive changes to his plan. Obviously, the staff has approved that. So I would just encourage the commission to look at that issue, look at what ultimately Sage Road could mean to this entire community, what does Sage Road could mean for all those folks who live out on Country Club Road, and think about it. If this development happens, there's a Sage Road connection. If this development doesn't happen, Sage Road doesn't happen. And again, this is a real project, I'm sure with the number of people who have taken an intense interest in this, there's going to be all sorts of things flying due to merit of correction. I would just encourage the commission to look at that. Again, this is at a very preliminary stage, it's not the big public hearing where all the evidence is presented. And as Mr. Murphy indicated, the purpose of these proceedings is to be fair. That's why everybody gets a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Keith, you got one?
If I may, Mr. Eric, I would like to make a clarification regarding Sage Road. We are going to be building that portion within the Schultz property. We would also like to point out that we fully recognize that the Sage Road in its current condition will not meet those requirements of connection. We understand that there will have to be a complete rebuild of Sage Road at some point, either by the homeowners or property owners adjacent to it, or by other means, and that until such time, we will not be able to get that connection. That concludes our presentation. We would like respectfully request the opportunity to respond and public comment or clarification as many as possible. Thank you.
Okay, so now what we do is we're going to allow, normally in these situations, when somebody's presenting a case, for us to consider, we don't have any time constraints, I'm going to allow the same, flex, some flexibility to, I don't know your name, but I'll allow you, I assume you're representing the attorneys from, somebody, is that correct?
Yes, sir. So, Mayor, this is, I am Brent Billhagen, I'm a land use attorney. We have an organized presentation. We respectfully request an opportunity to provide an organized presentation for both to the general public.
Sure. That's what I was trying to say, I'm going to allow you to do that.
Mr. Douglas, I'm sorry, can you tell us for the record who you represent next?
Yes, I represent, yes, Christina Taylor is the individual I represent who represents and is the voice of a number of the other residents in the city, but technically speaking, that's who I represent, and she's part of our presentation up here to my left.
Okay, so who's going to go first?
Yes, sir. And I guess I should put on the record.
Yeah, I was going to say, we need to get names and addresses on the record, and you guys can have that, so.
Thank you, sir. Again, I'm Brent Billhagen, 1960 Edgewood Drive, land use attorney for over 15 years, practicing for 20 years. Christina Taylor, she'll give you her address when she gets up here, and also as part of our presentation will be Michael Joe Athlin. I'm pronouncing that correctly, I'm always butchered in my language. His role is an expert, a certified attorney, and has been acknowledged as so by the courts over the years. So I would first like to hand it over to Mr. Taylor.
Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Christina Taylor. I live at 507 Hamilton Shores Court in Hamilton Point subdivision. I am an attorney, however, I do not specialize in landlords' law. I did take one class a few decades ago. The homeowners are aware that I've been speaking with over the past few weeks that I do not represent them as their attorney. I speak today simply as a concerned Winter Haven citizen and homeowner of property near the proposed development. I assume you gentlemen can see what I have seen happening, just want to show. This first slide is just a photo of Country Club Road. This next slide is a picture of my dream home, which I purchased in 2006. I looked at over 200 properties in the Orlando area and decided that I wanted to come back home and buy my home here. You see, my parents built their property from the ground up in 1994 in the Hamilton Point subdivision, and they remain there to this day. You can see that in my property, that's a beautiful pond, and just for proximity to you, immediately behind that pond is Country Club Road, which off to, if you're looking at that, the little bit to the left would be the proposed property. As you all are aware, the proposed development is located on Country Club Road. It's a winding tree-lined road surrounded by a community of estate homes, quiet neighborhoods, and open lands. And in an effort to show you more about that, I have a video presentation that basically walks through. Let's see if we can get it to you. No, I'm sorry, I'm going to see if I can.
How long's your video?
It was two minutes, and then it was too quiet, it was, it was like a second video as well. There were the things I could write, thank you Vanessa. Thank you. So, this is our video tour, and you can see, we are beginning on Country Club North, right around Kendall Lane, traveling south on Country Club Road. You're seeing large estate homes, picket fences, pasture land. You can also view cattle grazing as we take the curve here. In a moment, you will see an apiary with beehives. Generally, a lot of green space. You'll notice that numerous homes here are nestled quite a distance, a great distance away and set back from Country Club Road. Another item to notice while watching this video is the curves. At this point in the video, we have already passed eight yellow traffic signs denoting the curve. That's about a one-mile distance. We're now approaching the two entrances to what is currently the Outback Oasis. The two entrances are about two, excuse me, about .2 miles apart. Coming up on here. After this next curve. Here is the first entrance. And the second entrance is upcoming. Yeah, you can just pass over that one soon. Thank you, man. Okay, so. Second.
Got past the double yellow. Another one!
There's laughter in the room, and I am pointing to ours with honor because we were traveling at a speed limit of 30 miles an hour on that curve. And you can see the two trucks passing and then passing. Here you can see the back of the gates of Lake Regent, which has open pasture in front of it. We also are passing a few homes where we're going to end this side of the tour. This is about a 1.8 mile in length, and it had a total of nine curves. Thank you again Vanessa. So now we're going to take a quick video, one back the other way. So we are on Country Club Road, south, heading north this time. Again, you're going to see very similar uses here for the property. This is a different video, Vanessa. So yeah, who doesn't mind if you have two videos? There's two videos, yes. Right, hold on. That's the next one. Okay, hold on. Right, that kind of ended. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, so now we are traveling the opposite direction. You're going to notice very similar scenery. You can see again, larger estate home, white picket fences, a buddy of the road, we'll see a lot of few ponds, cows, very similar. As we travel the second time, I'd like you to notice there is a very lush tree-lined canopy surrounding the height of the road. You can see a little bit there. And as we're passing Outback Oasis here on the left side this time, you'll notice in just a moment that we will be approaching and have to pass what we see very often along this road, the regular currents of bike riders who use this road. You'll see in a moment, there's two fellows riding the road, others riding the road on their bikes, they appear to be novices, and one is about six years old by my estimation And here they come. You'll notice we have to stop for safety reasons in order to pass in the other lane We're approaching the Hamilton Point subdivision now on the right. And there is the entrance of the Hamilton Point subdivision, which has two entrances and exits. And finally, we are ending this part of the video tour with the pasture land. It's one of my personal favorites because it has three goats, two of them which are baby goats, so it's a beautiful land to pass. This time we're ending a little sooner at West Lake Hamilton Drive. So thank you for taking the time to view the video. Next, I'd like to show you the still photos of the property again. I'm not going to belabor this, it's very rural in nature. You'll notice that the homes here are built in an attempt to preserve the natural element in design and construction. These properties include those owned by the Wood family, the Muncie family, the Harvey family. This will also affect owners along Kendall Lane, which this property is on Kendall Lane. This is another photo of property inside the Hamilton Point, which shows the green area between the houses and the Hamilton Point. This is property owned by the Stoltz family, which is immediately adjacent to the proposed development. The next three photos are pictures of the Whistlers' property, who will be addressing the commission in a moment, and the location of their property as well, but since Mr. Whistler's speaking, I thought I would show you pictures of what he will be speaking about. I also wanted to consider the market to potential buyers. Realtors market their listings to highlight these pastoral settings to potential buyers. This is a current listing, and it's described and marketed as, and I quote, "A perfect country setting, set back off of Country Club Road, with long driveway and pasture. Situated on 4.95 acres, beautifully maintained, landscaping with mature oak and pine trees with a best pasture." And by the way, I'm assuming if the applicant gets this approved, he will be marketing it to potential buyers and probably will use the very same description when he is marketing to potential buyers. So now that you've seen some of the emerging areas immediately surrounding Country Club Road, I'm going to set forth the reasons why I and a few neighbors here have allowed me to speak on their behalf, actually, more than a few, several, on behalf of them wanting opposed to a development. I do want to start by mentioning that I have been to the Outback Oasis property for a few minutes. I have taken in the beauty of the Outback Oasis, the I have taken in the beauty of the Outback Oasis, the botanical and butterfly gardens, the mermaids sitting next to the pond. I have even watched Mr. Schultz himself interact with his kangaroos, Joey and Ozzy. It is a beautiful thing to behold, it really is. But here's the thing, and it's a really big thing. This proposal is significantly different in size and in scope than the current development, the current activities, and the current uses for this property. So I want to be very clear that I and my fellow neighbors who oppose this development were not opposed to growth. In fact, I am all for growth. I love Starbucks, I love Chick-fil-A, and I love Publix every five miles. I have two teenage daughters and I wish I was stalking all of them. But that new growth and development must be balanced by considering the existing communities. The existing areas are equally as important as the new development. Just because a new development is beautifully built, expertly designed and cultivated, unique, lavishly landscaped, or even biodiverse, which don't get me wrong, all of those are wonderful things. They're fantastic. But that does not necessarily mean it meets the criteria that the city itself has created through its own laws. And we've heard the criteria from Mr. Lockwood, consistency, compatibility, and community need. So I'll begin my comments specifically as to the proposed neighborhood activity center, which is described as a growth pattern for a new development located within the urbanized areas surrounding the urban core. We're pretty far from downtown Winter Haven. We also know that downtown Winter Haven is replete with commercial uses, multi-story buildings, and of course, it's higher density, it's downtown. The nature of Country Club Road and the surrounding one and two residential home, story residential homes, are closer to the description of suburb or rural, not urban. There are currently no commercial activities along Country Club Road, none. The proposed NAC, I use NAC for Neighborhood Activity Center, is presented to offer events faced for weddings, educational events, conferences, parties, which can draw hundreds of visitors at one time. As these artists stated, the current Outback Oasis has a maximum capacity of 250 guests. Presumably, a larger event center will draw at least double, maybe even triple that amount. So I wanted to see what this might look like because we have only been told in theory what it would mean. And I found a potentially comparable example in Winter Haven called Venue 650. When I originally was looking into this, it was very comparable to the 10,000 square feet that was then modified to 8,000. This is about 9,400 square feet indoor, so it is slightly, you know, 1,000, 1,400 square feet larger than the proposal. This venue can hold up to 450 guests comfortably, although it is approved for 700 guests by the fire marshal. As you can see from these photos, it's an amazing venue. It's also marketed for weddings, corporate events, and parties. As you can see here, I've been there and it is beautiful. It's an incredible asset to our city. However, the glaring distinction is that on your website, the owner's boast of the venue being located just a few blocks from downtown Winter Haven, unlike the location of this proposal. As you can see from this aerial photo, it is within walking distance of two major roadways, Highway 17 and Fifth Street Southwest. Simply put, this venue is right in the middle of the city's urban core, the heart of downtown Winter Haven, unlike the proposed location. Now, let's move to the size of the building, 40,000 square feet. I'm really not even going to touch on 8,000 square feet, I think it's probably a moot point because the goal has been stated previously that they want to go in that direction, so I assume the train is already out of the track. So as to 40,000 square feet, then I'm not an expert on how big buildings are, so I wanted a comparison. You can picture in your mind, one acre is, 40,000 square feet is about one acre, I've been a little bit, acres is a bigger one, one acre is a little smaller. See, I don't even know how to say it, one acre, I'll read it. One acre is a little smaller than the size of a football field. So a building of that size basically has a massive footprint. Under the proposal, the height of the commercial buildings can be up to 35 feet and then 45 feet, and that is considerably higher than any of the surrounding homes. And I do have one question I wanted to pose here because at the commission agenda meeting on Wednesday night, we were told the concessions again of the two-story and the three-story. So it was reduced from five stories to three stories as the maximum. But there was a question asked as to the height, and I believe the answer was the maximum height would be 55 feet with a decreasing slope to three stories. So is the height maximum 45 feet or is it 55 feet? Is there an answer? Do I get an answer or just...
You can answer that or I can... The Neighborhood Activity Center is located within the 500 foot setback area from Country Club Road, which wants to two stories only. The three stories of the 55 feet applies to beyond that, which would apply to the proposed adult living facility. And that's still in the three stories, the 55 feet was requested in order to develop a pitch roof as opposed to just a flat roof, a traditional looking structure. But again, the Neighborhood Activity Center is limited to two stories only. Okay. I need your question?
It does. So, it's a little confusing to me again as a layperson using the one story and height interchangeably because number one, a residential story is different generally accepted than a commercial.
I can clarify that.
Okay.
The height itself would be 35 feet, which is the same as it is in the residential road that the subdivisions have. Residents can go two stories, and the maximum is 35 feet. That would be the same that's applied in this 500 foot area, including the Neighborhood Activity Center.
Okay. So 35 feet, 45 feet, and then also 55 feet for the assisted living facility.
35, 55.
Is the maximum. Okay. So let me clarify because I seem incorrect. So 35 feet and then also 55 feet for the assisted living facility. Thank you for the clarification. As for the alternative uppers that we've been hearing about, building burns, painting trees, hedges, it's great. But again, the release of this height will be visible from various points along Country Club Road. As you saw, the pastures, we will see the buildings. It's impossible to up our building that much higher than ours in the area. Also because of the proximity of the neighbors being so close, stories and heights of this level will be visible from those which have some neighbors. All right, as to what this type of building might look like once built, again, these are the conceptual photographs that we were given for the 40,000 square foot building.
Counselor, I just wanted to remind you that time-wise, we've got a lot of people that want to speak tonight, and we allow them 25 minutes, and you've already gone 19, so we want to try to allow those other people to want to speak, so.
Okay, to address that issue, I do have folks that are willing to stand up and give their time to me.
I appreciate that. And we don't want anybody to feel slighted. We want to give time for anybody who wants to speak, but I'm just saying, as an interest in respect to everybody here that's got an interest and wants to talk, we allow them 25 minutes, so we hope that you'll try to do the same thing if you can.
Well, I would like at this point to have the folks that would allow me to use their time to go ahead and stand up and maybe that would make the situation better. If any of you would like me to speak on the path? Anybody would like me to use their time instead of theirs in order to respect the commission's time?
No, I'm saying respect to people in the room. I'll stay here till 2:00 in the morning. It's not about me, it's about our commission, it's about everybody else that wants to speak. So if I've got four pages of people that want to talk, if they don't want to talk, then that's okay. I'm just trying to ask you to be respectful to other people that want to talk, that's all. That's it.
And I'm saying, Rob, did any of those folks sign the paper?
Yes.
So several of those folks that signed the paper won't...
Okay, well, that's it.
All right, thank you. I do want to give a couple of comparable photos on this because again, I'm not an expert on sort of footage. There are the examples about, I found, this is a 40,000 square foot building. You can see that it abuts numerous commercial properties. This next one is a two-story building used for medical purposes. Another example is this one, 35,000 square foot office space. Another issue I wanted to mention that's been greatly debated is noise. So although I would go there, and I'm going to discuss issues other than those from amplified sound because we've been told repeatedly that he has agreed to no outdoor amplified sound as a concession to neighboring homeowners to placate our concerns. The commercial uses and activities creates all kinds of noise. There will be sound from semi-trucks making deliveries, sound from large amounts of trash being compacted and collected from the property, all occurring more frequently than a residential piece of property. There will also be sound from large numbers of guests moving around the property. Unless you think I'm nitpicking about noise, I assure you, I can hear cows that run from lanes across Country Club Road from my back porch. As mentioned earlier, sound travels across ponds and open spaces. It's very clear we would hear these sounds. Again, because none of these commercial noises exist on Country Club Road because it is so peaceful, there's going to be just a lot of sound from numerous dumpsters being emptied regularly, deliveries accepted from semi-trucks daily or even more often. There'll also be commercial lawnmowers and landscapers on a larger scale than a residential piece of property. I also wanted to mention the lighting aesthetics for a building 40,000 square feet size. In order to invite such a large number of people for events and other commercial activities, both the building and the parking lot will need to be very well lit for safety purposes. This will be drier and eliminate longer hours than utilized in a residential community. Another general consideration for noise is the proposed build out of this development over time. The proposal states 50 to 75 minutes will be built every 12 to 18 months through 2028. That means we'll be constantly hearing construction noise on a massive scale over the next 80 years. Another issue that's been discussed at length by experts is traffic, and I am not an expert thankfully, so I'll keep it simple. Just because Country Club Road has capacity to handle more cars under staff findings does not necessarily mean that the additional traffic is consistent or compatible with the surrounding neighborhood areas. The types of vehicles are larger. We use cars and trucks in our neighborhood, not semi-trucks. We do not host weekly, large-scale events. We do not employ full-time employees that enter and leave our homes on a daily basis. This simply would significantly change the feel of our quiet, tranquil country road. The road also is not currently lit along the road. There are very few street lights because it is a country road. New lighting would greatly diminish the country aesthetics of the surrounding properties. One more consideration as to traffic, because of the winding curves, the natural beauty and the country charm, our road is regularly used by bikers and joggers. There are no sidewalks or bike lanes on this road. Many areas don't even have a shoulder. This is a safety issue for both the pedestrians and the people who regularly drive this road. Unfortunately, also, there are several blind curves making this another safety issue, and there have been unfortunately numerous vehicle accidents in the past. I'd like to give a couple of considerations for this community, a community need for an assisted living facility called an aging in place concept. There are currently 33 of this assisted living facilities in Polk County, five of them in Winter Haven. A couple of them, as you know, are Hawthorne Inn, Brandywine Assisted Living Facility, both about three miles from the applicant's property. They both have about 60 residents. I called one of them on Friday and they had only 20 residents, so they did have availability. We also have the Village of Vienna Square, only 1.9 miles from the applicant's property, 154 units total. All of these facilities are only a five to seven minute drive from the proposed property, and they are all located on state roads, which is inconsistent with the road by Country Club Road. And finally, we really must consider Spring Haven, which is 5.4 miles from the proposed property. It has 300 units, which is 100 less than the proposal. You can see the property footprint is quite large, even when stretched up to four stories, which in our case would be a little lower at three stories. Spring Haven is also located on a six-lane road known as Highway 544, which we refer to as Haven Down. It's also only about .3 miles to another state road, State Road 17. Again, significantly different than Country Club Road. Density of the assisted living facility and the associated buildings, I'm just going to, again, I'm not an expert, simple math here, 400 units is double the average for the current surrounding properties. One final consideration as to the type of facility, the application of estimates of projected population of 760 people for development in those 400 units, which would be 760 people living there. However, the operation of this type of facility is also commercial in nature, will have a large full-time staff to provide numerous services, such as three meals a day, food preparation, food service, food cleanup, nursing and medical care around the clock 24 hours a day, seven days a week, other support services such as laundry and housekeeping. So that generates more people on the property than just the residents, and certainly more than a single-family residence. So such a large-scale development in a neighborhood community will negatively impact, rather than preserve, the residential tranquility of the surrounding community. So as I conclude, these proposed changes are not consistent, they're not compatible, there is no community need, so I respectfully request that you deny this proposal, and I ask Mr. Goathead to come up next.
Okay, so Counselor, you're going to talk for how long?
I'm going to hurry up, I'm going to be about 10 minutes.
Okay, then after that, you're done and we're going to allow...
We have our expert, Mr. Goathead, who's speaking with regard to language.
Okay, well, you've already taken more time than they took, so please try to speed us along if you can out of respect of everybody in the room because I've got people leaving that want to talk.
Yes, sir. I will do so. I'll try to spread that out before we do these other ones.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I'm going to, I'd like to first, I'm going to speak now, and then Mr. Goathead afterwards. Where can I approach to provide the documentation? Can you give us one fact that we're interested in?
Lockwood. Yes, sir. There you go. There's six copies, so I have one for the clerk for the record. And I'll begin, there's a small packet for each one of you, a long packet as we moved before. And again, I'm going to try to do as soon as I can under the circumstances. Two things I did want to address with regard to, two representations on the bar, Mr. Lockwood, I want to make clear about. Mr. Lockwood did speak to the resident's testimony here, and I want to be, I want to make sure, I want to make sure we make this very clear. For the law is clear against this one case on American versus Prescott, PCA 2001, that citizen testimony, as long as, for instance, it goes to compatibility, is substantial competent evidence, which is the criteria that we look upon as lawyers, attorneys, when we come into a venue like this, and present evidence and testimony to you. So it's not, just to be clear, something to just be listened to and just like, if any of these residents live or have property in the vicinity and are speaking, for instance, to compatibility, which involves large residential things, that's the next thing I want to address, then that is substantial competent evidence as long as what you're representing is in fact the truth, which there's nothing indicate, anything to contradict at this point. The other thing is with regard to traffic. Mr. Lockwood mentioned that with regard to traffic, and again, I just want to be clear, I'm not suggesting he can say anything other than what the law is. I think what Mr. Lockwood was speaking to was contingency as far as being a traffic expert. The law is very clear again, that with regard to, for instance, some of the testimony that Miss Taylor provided with regard to traffic, it can go to compatibility. And so if there's testimony up here about issues and problems with regard to traffic, and then... and then with what's being proposed as part of the application, which in the staff report, that that would be using, if nothing else, common sense, lead to a greater traffic problem, and therefore incompatibility, that certainly can be looked upon as substantial competent evidence, I suggest should be looked upon as substantial competent evidence. As you know, this is not a, we present in these type laws judicial matters, this is not a popularity factor, contest, matter, how good or bad someone is or isn't. Ultimately, what you're charged with, this commission, of course, I think this is something you already have, but I think it's always important to be reminded, is determining whether this proposal is inconsistent at all, in any way, shape, or form, even the slightest way, with or a violation of the slightest way with your comprehensive plan, the winner of the two, Winter Haven's comprehensive plan. Again, what we have here is an established land use and zoning area, although annexed in. Nonetheless, this is an area, and I'll continue to address this and remind the commission of this, that many of these folks out here invested in and relied upon, and I want to remind the commission of this, I'm not so sure that it's very clear in the staff report, and that is what they've been relying on and investing in and continuing to invest in by continuing to live there, is that this area, the subject property, was RL one in the county. Now RL one in the county, just so we're clear here, is not the same as RL one in the city of Winter Haven. RL one in the city of Winter Haven is four units per acre on, or across, it's ten thousand square foot lots. RL one in the county is one per one. That's a drastic difference in and of itself, even if we're just looking at density. And in this particular instance, that's what we need to focus on. And again, aside from, I think Ms. Taylor talked about this, how excited it might otherwise be about what's being proposed in and of itself by the applicant. As I understand, I've never met the applicant, but I can be told he's a really great guy, and this may be a really otherwise good or great proposal in and of itself and by itself. But ultimately, what we're looking at here is your comprehensive plan. That's all we're supposed to be looking at in the light of the facts that are being presented here, and that are being weighed. And ultimately, where the rubber hits the road in this case is whether or not it's compatible with what's being proposed. Is it compatible, when the rubber hits the road, with the surrounding area pursuant to your comprehensive plan and your land development codes of relations to comprehensive plan? Of course, our position in the testimony, I think already Ms. Taylor, in her further testimony substantiates that in fact this is not compatible, and therefore, aside from how much we might like it otherwise, or how much of a great guy the applicant is otherwise, this is just the wrong place for it. This was addressed by Mr. Lockwood as well. In your packet, the first thing you'll see is the order that was referenced from the county, the nine CU sixteen dash twelve with prejudice, and that was, I believe, the two thousand and sixteen, yes, September of two thousand and sixteen. Now, Mr. Lockwood has got it, this is not the same application, but there is some apples to apples here as far as what we're looking at. I would suggest to this commission that you've already had your colleagues, your counterparts at the county, just two years ago, this was like ten years ago, I guess maybe two or three, two years ago, review and assessments, and there's nothing to suggest they didn't review and assess it seriously and thoroughly. What was being proposed there, which you can see on the front page, number two, says the application proposes a high-density recreation facility to allow the property owners to host weddings, ceremonies, receptions, group gatherings, fundraisers, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. That's not what's being proposed here, but what we would confidently suggest to this commission is, is that in fact what's being proposed here, in the totality of what's being proposed, whether with a footprint or not, is something that is actually more intense and more expansive than what was even being proposed from the county at the time. And yet, the county came to the conclusion that it was incompatible. And I think that becomes important, and I'll reference one of your comprehensive plan laws and provisions, that says, hey, you're to cooperate at a minimum with the county and take all that into account when you're meeting certain thresholds. And by not doing so, that would be something inconsistent with your comprehensive plan, a violation of your comprehensive plan, if this were to be approved. Paragraph nine of the order states in reference to the county's comprehensive plan, second sentence, the policy also states that Polk County recognizes and references policy, policy is provision in the comprehensive plan, in this instance, Polk County recognizes responsibility to protect the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens while providing my quality of life for all its residents, promoting an orderly, efficient, economically sound, harmonious, safe, and helpful living environment. Now, you have something very similar, again, I'll bring your attention to that later when we look at that law, y'all have the same type law in the city of Winter Haven, comprehensive plan. In this case, preventing further commercialization of a well-established residential neighborhood promotes the basic principles found in the comp plan. So they recognize preventing commercialization, which is something that is a part of this package here ultimately, is something that would promote the basic principles found in the comp plan, and in particular, the sentence before, which again, is generally speaking exactly what y'all have in the city of Winter Haven, comprehensive plan, and that is promoting the health, safety, and welfare of its citizens while providing a high quality of life for all its residents. To otherwise allow for this, particularly in this area, which by the way, I've talked about urban sprawl coming out, talking something in an area like this, I would suggest to this commission that this is the essence of urban sprawl, or allowing for it if this proposal were to be approved. Paragraph ten, the comp plan and LDC define compatibility as follows. Now, this is the definition that Mr. Lockwood read, it is your definition in your LDC, and I think it's important as well. And this is compatibility, a condition in which land uses or conditions can coexist relative, proximate to each other in a staple fashion over time such that no use or condition is unduly negatively impacted directly or indirectly by another use or condition. And again, you don't have any other testimony or evidence than you and the people who live in that area. There's no one else in this room, other than the people who live in that area, who know best as to what is compatible and not compatible, and their testimony is real evidence, and the courts have recognized that. Here, the board finds, and goes on, the proposed use of, of course, the application's urban intensified commercial, non-residential use is not compatible with a well-established residential neighborhood along Country Club Road, and sound and traffic impacts to the neighborhood cannot be adequately mitigated or bothered. Furthermore, proving the application would open the door to more intense user commercial activity in this quiet residential neighborhood. Now again, technically different application, but we're talking about something here, the totality of the package of which is more intense and more expansive. And ultimately, if your colleagues, your counterparts at the county, did a thorough assessment of this, there's nothing indicative they did not, ultimately, they found that it was not compatible with something that was even less intense, and not nearly as expansive as what is being proposed here today. With compatibility, you generally address two things in general, one or the other or both, that is intensity or density. Now again, with the Polk County application and the order of denial, all they're addressing there is intensity. In this particular instance, once again, to show the expansiveness of this as compared to what was before the county, this is dealing with both intensity, different types of activities that are otherwise at least different, if not incompatible, with the surrounding existing area, and densities. Because again, what you had and what these people relied on was RL one at the county, which was one unit per one acre. Here, at a minimum, you're going to four units per acre with your RL one. Actually, the appropriate transition here to respect what these folks have recently relied upon all these years would be your RE. Your RE residential estate is the equivalent of the county's RL one, which is one unit per one acre. That would be the appropriate transition as a result of the annexation that is taking place here. One thing I do think is important to address in this particular matter is the purpose of zoning and land use. You know, as long as I've been doing this, I have a tendency at least to gloss over, you know, why are we even here? We miss the forest or the trees. And I think in this particular instance, it's important to look at, why do we even have, why do we do have zoning and land use? I would suggest two primary reasons. The first one, and most importantly in this case, is a micro reason. So that when someone is contemplating whether to buy or invest in a piece of property, whether to continue to hold on to it, continue with that investment, he can have some reasonable assurance of what and how land will be used around him, and due to his concern with how such affects his value or hurt value of the property and the quality of life, or if it's something other than residential, his ability to use a benefit from that property with whatever he chooses to get more. And then the other reason, not as important for purposes of this case, but nonetheless, I would suggest to you is a macro reason. So that from a big picture standpoint, the community can be mended together in a tapestry that harmonious, otherwise compatible, harmonious land uses, so that each parcel of land can be enjoyed, term of art in Georgia, to its fullest extent and use. Now, in this particular instance, I would suggest to you that land use and zoning becomes futile, if something of this nature, of this expansiveness, this intensity, and this greater drastic density compared to what is in place right now, would completely make zoning futile. Why is it even there? It was for these people, the surrounding area, no one else. And it should be noted, I would suggest to this commission as well, whether the applicant annexed into your city or not, as to whether this is approved or not, it should be looked upon as being irrelevant. I understand, you know, annexation I've been involved in, I understand what workman was putting to it, but with all due respect to the applicant, this gentleman, he did that at his own risk, and I would suggest to you, particularly in the face of the denial by the Polk County, Polk County commissions, that I think he expected there would be issues, there wasn't issue, come to Winter Haven, I get it. And the tip of the, that does not negate any compatibility issue, it does not negate incompatibility. And the applicant, again, with all due respect, he takes on that risk, it shouldn't be these folks. This area had and has been relied upon by these residents, again, with, through Polk County RL one, which effectively allows for as most one unit per one acre. The applicant's proposal is not just merely different than the land use they rely on as drastically in contravention to what they rely on, where they live, so much so that it compromises and maybe destroys any notions of any reasonableness or fairness in land usage. From the standpoint of, some of the things Ms. Taylor has identified in her testimony, noise, traffic, traffic safety, from a compatibility standpoint, the type of vehicles, which goes to compatibility as well, now all of a sudden you have different forms of commercial vehicles coming along the road, more so than you've had before, lighting aesthetics compromising the atmosphere and audience that we saw in the videos and photos, compromising the tranquility that is specifically mentioned even in your code law, we'll get to that in a second. All of them do to what was otherwise is tranquil, quiet place. And again, I would suggest to you the essence of inappropriate urban sprawl. With regard to concessions, and I'm not suggesting that the applicant here did this, but it's a very common developer factor that I've dealt with many times, where they come in on the front and there's something they think may or may not get through, but they make some concessions and it looks like they're creating compatibility. If you had a spectrum of zero to a hundred, zero being the expectations of what the residents here, Reebok, relying upon, and a hundred, what the developer is wanting, these concessions amount to at most going down to ninety-five. There's still a zero, he's at ninety-five. Concessions in and of themselves do not create compatibility. You still have to look at that definition and enlighten the testimony, all the testimony, bouncing away that testimony, whether or not aside from any de minimis or insignificant concessions, whether or not that all of a sudden brings to compatibility. We would suggest in this instance, it doesn't come anywhere near to create compatibility. Now, the, I think I've read to you, the compatibility definition in your packet is the last page. You'll see compatibility there, it gives you the definition, it is the same definition from which I read the order from the county. It just so happens that the county and the city of Winter Haven have the same definition. If you'll look at, now what I want to get into real quickly, as I get to the quote, the most important is identifying the areas of law that from our standpoint would be in violation, and that this proposal was inconsistent with. The first page in front of you in your packet is, at the top of it says introduction, at the bottom is page five. First sentence, it is the vision of the city of Winter Haven to provide a future growth plan that will protect and invigorate existing residential and commercial areas while encouraging compatible and innovative new development. We would suggest that that's inconsistent with what's being proposed here, or what's being proposed here is inconsistent with that proposition. And then if you look at goal one, is the goal of the city of Winter Haven to secure the high-quality living, working, and resting environment by directing the character, location, magnitude, and timing of land use, by directing that. And you already have a future land use map that was in place with regard to one-to-one in order to ultimately preserve residential tranquility, that's in your law, in order to preserve residential tranquility. The testimony here today is, is this is more than true and interfered to possibly destroy that tranquility that they rely upon. Maintain the value of private, public, investment in the community, enhance that, sticking around here, enhance the city's unique sense of place, and ensure the city's sustainability for future generations. It's our position that this proposal does not is inconsistent with those propositions of law in your comprehensive plan. Go to the next page, page ten of chapter one point three. Promote a compact and efficient growth pattern for new development. Again, this goes to urban sprawl, with, by throwing this out in areas such as this, this is leapfrogging over areas where by recreating urban sprawl, urban sprawl is to be a situation where urbanism, urbanism, urbanism stays in the core. This is wholly outside of good land planning with regard to the concept of urban sprawl. If you look at page twenty-four, policy one point six point one, you believe this proposal does not is inconsistent with this proposition. Maintain and implement, implement land development regulations that define the standards and criteria for the use, density, intensity, and compatibility of land, water, and adjacent land and water uses. This proposal does not is inconsistent with that provision of your comprehensive plan. And if you look at the next page, policy one point six point eleven, bottom page twenty-five, implement guidelines designed for pivot expansion and replacement of land uses that are incompatible with this future land use settlement. Again, that's inconsistent, we have incompatibility here, the expansiveness, intensity, and increasing density that is drastically, as this is, is incompatible with the surrounding area of my clients' homes. And policy one point seven point one, the last one, it's our position that this proposal does not is inconsistent with this proposal. And this one, I think, almost the most black and white one, if you will, not the others or not, but this one, I may be the most. Policy one point seven point one maintains land development regulations that define the standards and criteria to coordinate development, review, analysis, approval, and issuance of development orders and permits for those projects exceeding adopted thresholds, which the threshold here was RL one, one unit per one acre, that's what was in place, that's what they were relying on, to ensure consistency between comprehensive plans, to ensure consistency between comprehensive plans. That's not happening here if this proposal does not is approved, and to reduce, mitigate, or eliminate potential adverse impacts of such development proposals between the city of Winter Haven, and I'll put an and in there, and Polk County in this particular instance. That's not happening here, but we believe that the proposed development is inconsistent with that provision. It's okay, again, it's okay to really like this development in closing. It's okay that apparently the applicant, this gentleman is someone disliked by many people, and is really a good guy, as I understand, which I can't, I'm not necessarily inclined to say that, but I'm focused on an opposition to number all these years, but it appears clear that he is. But at the same time, though, it's okay, and it's right, and we should recognize that what's been proposed here is not the inappropriate area and not the appropriate place pursuant to your comprehensive plan. And the full, the full land use, I'm sorry, future land use map for Polk County, which takes into consideration adjacent city zoning, which this commission is to take into consideration adjacent county zoning, substantiates that the plan never was for anything like this. This was designated RL one, and was denied for even a conditional use approval. Thus, given the totality, the circumstances, honorable commissioners, given the greater, much greater intensity, expansiveness, and greater density, it's our position that the proposed development, and it's my legal opinion that the proposed development does not meet compatibility pursuant to your compatibility pursuant to your cities' comprehensive plan and the land development code, even applying common sense application. I'll stand for any questions, but otherwise hand the mic over to Michael Joakim, who is our land use commissioner. Thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Merkin appears to this side, is going to go in for 52 minutes.
I won't say that again, we came here. I'm so sorry.
52 minutes, 52 minutes.
And Mr. Gohegan, hardly Miss Taylor, and Mr. Gohegan has brought in 52 minutes.
Okay, so what we're going to do now is I'm going to institute the five minute rule, yes, at seven o'clock, if you get it done in five minutes, great. I want to allow all the people in the audience a chance to speak. If you need more time, we can come back at the end and finish, we don't want to cut you off, but I've seen too many people leave that want to speak to this body. And so I'm going to allow you five minutes, so when you hear the buzzer, you're in the middle of the sentence, I'll give you a little.
I'm Michael Joakim, I am certified with the plan, I came in 1973 to Polk County and started the Polk County Planning Department. So I've been planning in Polk County for a very long time. So the points on this property is, when we look at this property, we feel that if any of these changes do not conform to the city's comprehensive plan or the state statutes, and you have listed inclining, I'm not going to go over all of them and consolidate those. The city's intent is to be compatible with the county's comprehensive plan and zoning. The proposed future land use categories increase the density and intensity of what's in the county now or what you would originally consider for the city. The commercial land use, the event conference center, are not compatible with the existing land use patterns. The current land use pattern is very low density residential, has no commercial. The event and reference conference center are not compatible even with your neighborhood activity center for future land use designations. The proposed changes require each section to collect roads, said road does not exist, and therefore there's no intersection to collect roads, and your proposal fails that text. There are kangaroos proposed, and you have no provisions in the ordinance for exotic animals or kangaroos. The future land use proposed is not compatible with existing development patterns, the constancy stall, stall by the state's definition, and creates an unsafe development pattern along Country Club Road. Some of the highlight points that we saw in the proposal, there are lots of smalls, 5,000, 2,000 square feet proposed, which are way smaller than what's out there now. And there are minimum land areas of 5,000 square feet and 2,000 square feet, again, way smaller than even the existing subdivisions that you now have in that general area. The minimum square feet of blue area is 800, which again is smaller than what we have in that area. So there are a number of things that you can go down and you can see in the list that I made for you, the points that I made. I'm not going to go into any of the details, but we're more than happy to deal with that and provide the commission and the city with more information on our points of view.
Okay, so let's start off with our, what we're going to do is we've got Gordon McGinnis, you've signed up to speak. Jennifer Foltz, she's on your deck, so either here, still here, if you'd come way back and let me know if you're still here. If not, after Jennifer is Michael. Joe Keen, is Michael still here?
Michael just spoke.
Oh, Michael, okay, Michael just spoke. Linda Burns?
I'm here and I've needed my time to christine.
Okay, Linda's seated, her time, Nancy Davis? Would you like to speak? If you'd come out of your old deck, okay? So we're going to go ahead and let Gordon go, you've got five minutes, and then when you get done, we'll have Nancy's turn. So go ahead.
My name is Gordon McGinnis. I live at 348 Nippon Circle, and that's part of the Gates Lake Region. My wife and I moved to Winter Haven 40 years ago. Winter Haven's a little over 100 years old, I tell people, we lived here almost half my life. I'll be 80 next month, so I've been around the block a couple times. I also would like you to know that I'm not a mere fighter in this business. My wife and I have owned a real estate company for the last 33 years, land, land development, residential, commercial. I'm also a graduate civil engineer. 57 years ago I graduated, and I've seen a lot of open options. But most importantly, we love Winter Haven, we've been here a long time, we try to be positive on things that have happened and different people that have interfaced with us, and I think you know, we're not just smoke blowing smoke, we're here to help, we're not here to obstruct. Towards that end, I've known women, I've known Country Club Road for 25, 30 years. We've been long to the Country Club for years, when Mike Nolan started the Gates Lake Region, we admired that, we were living at Cosadell Soul off of 21st Street for 28 years. 13 years ago we moved to the Gates Lake Region because it is a beautiful area. So I'm very familiar with what's going on, what is going on. There's been six residential subdivisions just in the last 15, 18, 20 years along Country Club Lane, I'm familiar with every one of them. And so with that as a background, I think the very important thing that I can add is, my wife and I, in Marshall, Massachusetts. In 2004, we sold our house and we bought at Linden Ponds in Hayman, Massachusetts, you can Google it, it's an Ericsson community, Ericsson, they call it continuing care, they kept aging and life, continuing care. It's a, it's a one stop, not shopping, but it's a one stop, you move in and you don't have to move later on. But it's a beautiful campus type setup, and that's what impresses me about what Paul is proposing here. That, there are other things branding on, that's not even, that's ridiculous, you even think of branding on. But this would be a campus type layout, and it is 100% compatible with what a continuing care facility would be, all the way from victory gardens to landscaping and all that sort of thing. So I support, strongly support what Paul is proposing here. I know about all the things that the previous speakers have talked about, that's, you can come up with a thousand of those, and I can do that too, but I've been at it from a professional standpoint, an experience standpoint, and a living standpoint, and I've lived it, and been there. We bought a two bedroom unit, for example, at Linden Ponds in Hayman, Massachusetts, and now they've got a thousand people living in that campus situation, and we paid $270,000 for it. Now, some of them that need sit to move in, we bought, and then when you leave, you get your money back, so that's the kind of a deal it is. The last thing I'd like to point out here is a lot of people are talking about the traffic and all the, all the road situation on Country, up road. 13 years ago specifically, I wrote a letter to the Winter Haven Planning Department, met with the planning department, suggested, before, this was before Country Walk was approved, before Country Club Estate, suggested how they could get rid of the Esper by making a big half moon circle, that's when 242, 542 was first hot, and we have a blinking light over the road. With a big half moon circle, go around back to those subdivisions, it would come out of a four way spot. Nobody seemed to pick me up on it, I, so we moved on. But now, after the planning board meeting three weeks ago, it brought it back to my forefront, so I wrote another letter to the Winter Haven Planning Department three weeks ago. Haven't heard from anybody, but I suggested, this is the last clear chance to, you aren't going to get a stoplight, and I talked to the county for an hour in the last week too. I can't see us ever getting a stoplight at Country Club Road. But we already have the nation's of a four, of a four way stoplight at all of, and I admit, that is possible, the county is working on it, and I applaud the city of Winter Haven, and I'll inform them tomorrow, the next day, or whatever, and talk to them seriously. They're, they're going to go out for bid in April, they're going to let the bid in April of 2020. So we've only got about three months to get this stoplight overlooked solidly back there.
Thank you, thank you, appreciate that. Okay, we have Linda Burns, or no, are you Linda?
Jennifer Foltz.
Jennifer Foltz, okay, I'm sorry, Jennifer, but Linda's next.
Yes.
Okay. Give us your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Jennifer Foltz, my address is 116 Grant Road. I'm here in the capacity to represent my parents who reside in Hamilton Point at 411 Horseshoe Lane Northeast. And that's where the story starts. And my parents, 93, searched all through the county, particularly on the south side, so they grew closer, and they wanted a world unity, they were going to sell their home on land. They wanted a long winding road, they wanted a peace and quiet, and they purposely went into Hamilton Point and bought the second biggest lot, Hamilton Acre and Size. They built their dream home, and they did it so that they could face south, so they could get the sun on the back porch, and they could listen to the cows at night, watch the stars, and listen to their kids grow up. Later on, like my sister mentioned, Christine Taylor, she would move and make the same choice to move to this neighborhood because when we were here, my parents even made a house so that we could come home, and we could even see at that point in time that they were riding horses along the road. Probably some of you that have been there for a long time can remember that, you could even get horseback riding lessons when the pools were there. You also can remember some probably the rodeos, but more importantly, we watched it go from the 90s until present, and how it grew, and we got more residential neighbors. And what's more important is we got friends, and we got family. We know folks all the way from the north side of Country Club Road, and my parents want to say that, they know folks from Rankin Road all the way into the newer subdivisions and crossroads, and into the hope soon to be Country Walk, we meet some new friends there. And in this, we have lots of friends, and we walk around safely in our neighborhoods, we know each other, we pick up each other's nails, and that is the kind of area that is here. And most importantly, you know your kids choose your retirement? Well, my parents chose this neighborhood as their retirement, and guess what, this is where I want them to age in place, in their single family residence along a residential road. I don't want them to be concerned that if they look right and left, not fast enough, pulling out of the Hamilton Point subdivision, that perhaps an emergency vehicle, no one's mentioned those, would have to be coming and going regularly from an assisted living facility, as well as more commercial traffic, there's going to be more deliveries, there's going to be more traffic, and let's not even talk about the staff that would be coming in and out 24/7 a day, and all of that noise that we could hear. My mom sits on the back porch and she's hanging up bird watching, my dad develops a special bird food, and they get to see the painted bunnies, listen to the cows, watch the old finches, and do all of those kind of things. What concerned me the most is when they contacted me recently and said, hey, we went to the planned, the planning commission meeting on January 3rd. Well, I was very concerned to hear that they were in another room where they cannot hear, they could not see the presentation being offered. My father was able to speak for a few moments, he was one of the 11 that spoke, but there were probably dozens of people there who did not get to speak. And I think that any of you who are speaking tonight, who did not get to speak, I hope they didn't mention that. That greatly concerns me that my parents do not get to have that opportunity. Again, I really, I'm speaking to this audience too, is that we want to keep this a residential community, we ask that you will, I know at this time it's transmittal, but we also don't think we've been given the right opportunity to say this is not compatible. I was on the first case in 2016, I can speak to the same things that Brent has already mentioned about the definition of compatibility, it didn't meet the criteria then, it doesn't meet the criteria now with the more intensive development. Thank you for your time, we ask that you vote against this.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Linda Burns.
I've seated to christine.
Oh, I'm sorry, you seated, okay. Nancy Davis? And we have Michael Keen on deck, is Michael still here? Michael, you're going to speak, Michael? You come up, please, and get on deck, you'll be next. Okay, give us your name and address, please, you have five minutes.
Thank you, good evening, I'm Dr. Nancy Keen, my address is 3800 Country Club Road South. I own 44 acres that are just north and contiguous with the proposed development. I moved to Country Club Road 19 years ago for the idyllic rural agricultural atmosphere. I've created a sanctuary there for myself and my animals. In a short time, approximately five years ago, when I purchased the pond in front of my property, I was approached by Paul, inquiring as to whether or not I had any plans to develop my property. I said, no, I did not wish to develop, and he allowed, and he did not wish to develop his property either. Our common vision at that time was that the natural beauty of our continuous properties would be preserved as such. The concerns that I have, and I'm not a legal person or physician, so I'll leave the legal leads to the determinants, but my concerns include traffic, the noise, and all the other things that have been a new worry this evening. This is a residential neighborhood, and the development will ensure anything that Paul does would be tastefully done is inappropriate for this area. In conclusion, I would ask that each of you seriously consider the impact here personally in your neighborhood, if you were, as I am, faced with the development of the size and magnitude of this proposed project in your own backyard. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next we have Michael. After Michael, we have Ray Stangle, who's the applicant. He already spoke, okay. Robert Rose, are you still here? Robert is not here. Terry Johnson, are you still here? You going to speak, Terry? Okay, okay. Go ahead, Michael, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, commissioners. I want to speak on behalf of...
Would you give us your name and address for the record, we have to have that under the record, please.
Sorry.
Your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Michael Keen, 3800 Country Club Road, Winter Haven. I want to speak on behalf of another group of Wain constituents of yours, we talked about the zebra butterfly earlier, and I want to talk about the San Hill Cranes. And they have some extremely wonderful qualities, they make for life, fearlessly defend their children, and there happens to be a large rookery on the back of my sister's property. And it's wonderful to hear them, it sounds like those blocks that you had in high school bandages snapped together. They, it sounds like in the mornings and in the evenings when they're settling down, it sounds like, it's almost like, it's this amazing sound, it's like thousands of those blocks being clacked together. And I want to mention one other thing, that it's a topic that our former governor wouldn't even allow professionals, staff to talk about, it's called global warming. And that whole area there is a natural wetland, and it's wonderful for recharge, and one of the concerns I have about this development is the impervious surface surfaces. There's a Peace Creek drainage canal that bifurcates my sister's property or property next to her to the north. There's already an issue when there are very, very, very heavy rains of that water trying to find someplace to go. So on behalf of the San Hill Cranes and the Wetlands, I urge you not to approve this project, and thank you for your attention.
Terry, you're up. We have Tom Johnson on deck, Tom, you still here? Come forward.
Do you see all these people here, some in orange and some not in orange? We have been here, and we have waited our turn, and I want you to realize that all these people have left yet. Appreciate that back. I am opposed to Mr. Shaw... I am opposed to Mr. Schultz's proposal. I attended the January 23rd, 2019 city commission agenda meeting.
You need to give us your name and address for the record, please. I'm sorry, would you get a little closer to the microphone so we can hear you? Thank you.
Terry Johnson, 407 Horseshoe Lane, Winter Haven, Hamilton Point. I know it's late, and I really appreciate that you're hanging in here with us, but we had to follow the agenda. So please hang in a little longer. I oppose Mr. Schultz's proposal. I attended the January 23rd city commission agenda meeting. And while I appreciate all the decisions that you gentlemen have to do all the time that affect all aspects of the city that we live in, and I am glad I don't have to make these decisions. Some things that the city planner mentioned at that meeting, they, pause, pause. He says, he asked, what if we stop sun gardens from being built? And I often wonder, does the city want a slice of gardens on Country Club Road? What would that do to the traffic and the noise in the area? He also said, and brought up the term, ecotourism. Well, I don't understand why you would be left to U D with 400 residents, a 40,000 square foot neighborhood activity center, and then stated in Mr. Schultz's first proposal, a restaurant and a lounge for that work ethic. What would the safety issues on Country Club Road and/or both roads save you if the people are allowed to drink and drive these dark, and as Mr. Schultz stated in his second proposal, winding tree-lined rivers? Certainly, the people that they've been in assisted living facility wouldn't want ego buses, ego coming to tour their property. They wouldn't want buses coming through as ego tours, they wouldn't want groups coming through. So the problem is that these projects are really not compatible. One is an event center, one is an assisted living center. The city manager also stated that sometimes you have to do what is not popular. This is not a popular project. The residents of these communities cannot choose what direction the city has to go. A low-density, 55-foot community with bright end and gumballs would be needed, but not, might not be popular with the community. Please do not dismiss us. And remember that you have had planners working with you. You have had a year to discuss this, and we have had a few meetings to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom, and we have Ryan Jaffe on deck. You're on deck, come forward. Tom, just give your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Thomas Johnson, 407 Horseshoe Lane, as my wife just told me. I want to go on record as opposed to this development. I don't want to go over all of the things that they just said, you heard it all, that's perfectly fine. And do want to remind you that when we annexed, when the city annexed Hamilton Point, five years ago or so, they gave it an RL1 designation. That's the precedent that has been set for that area in terms of city property. I don't want you to set a new precedent that would potentially allow other property across the street, next door, to also ask for commercialization as Mr. Schultz just said. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Brian, we have John Van Meter on deck. Give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Hello, gentlemen, Ryan Jaffe, 2517 Sherwood Street. I'm not an attorney, I'm not an expert, I'm just a born and raised Polk County boy, first-time homeowner right off of Crump Road. And the main reason I'm here tonight is because I drive Dundee, I drive Country Club every morning, every afternoon. And I just worry about this adding to an already extensive, annoying, quite dangerous sometimes even. Can you ask if you don't live there, try turning left onto Dundee Road from Country Club in the morning? It's, I lived in Tampa for four years, I kind of feel like I'm back there sometimes, but also Crump Road. Because I feel very hard pressed to think that people will take Stageron all the way to Dundee whenever they can cut across from 27 to Crump just to get to Country Club. It's already becoming that, cars zoom back and forth. I have a two, almost three-year-old, and I have an almost 10-year-old. The 10-year-old's getting ready to ride the bus soon, and it makes me worry. We saw in the video cars passing ones already, tragedies we've already had in Florida regarding school buses and children. And again, I just hope you take that into account from all the citizens. Thanks for what you're doing, keep up, and you're in.
Thank you. Okay, so Johnson, we have Craig Merrill on deck. Is Craig still here? Is that Craig in the back? Okay, you're on deck, okay. Name and address.
Thank you, gentlemen, great patience. John Van Meter, 2150 Hamilton Lane. Try to be as brief as possible. In case I don't effectively communicate my feelings on this, I want to come out of the box and say I'm very, very opposed to this. Parts of the area frankly can't understand why we're actually considering this because it's so diametrically opposed to the area surrounding where we're talking about doing this. But when I was at the planning commission meeting, does the plan still call for the potential for a 64-square-foot sign every 200 feet? Was there one? I thought it said, I thought it had a readily, that they could do it every 200 feet.
No.
Yeah. And there can only be one along Country Club Road. Okay, thank you for that clarification. Slight routine is my angle here, but thank you, Christine, for the wonderful video that you presented. When I saw that, I didn't see a Starbucks, or a Chick-fil-A, or a Morgan and Morgan sign. I just didn't see that. Maybe you were driving in excessive speeds, you said you were driving 30 miles an hour, so. You know, this just kind of goes to the point that, you know. And I know Paul, I want to go on record saying I know Paul Schultz. And if you've ever been to his place, there are not enough O's in the word wow for what he's done out there. And I will say this, for what he's done for the beauty of Country Club Road itself, which was already a beautiful piece of road, but he's done one hell of a lot to enhance it. But, you know, he has counsel here that's talking about compatibility. I look at compatibility, and my definition from Oxford Living Dictionary says, "A state in which two things are able to exist or occur together without problems or conflict." Now, they brought professionals that, you know, engineering professionals. They rely on certain statistical data, and they make some assumptions like, so many of the people are going to drive down this road, and they're not going to go down this road. Those are assumptions that they make. Well, I think I've got a lot of professionals here tonight who are like, oh, my good neighbors. Can I have a raise of hands of people that are my professionals? That live in, and they have skin in the game. These are people that are professionals that did come from Orlando, or out of town. These are, these people that are residents right on Country Club Road. And they are professionals. Many of them have lived there for five, 10, 15, 20, 30, 35, 40 years, families. And they don't want to be part of this development. And I mean, if we're going to allow commercial signage on Country Club Road, I mean, this is, this is just not who we are. I mean, this isn't where we need to go, so. Thank you very much, Darrell Ramble.
Thank you. Okay, Craig Merrill's up, we have Kyle Deuce on deck. Kyle Deuce here, okay. Craig, give us your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
I'm Craig Merrill, looking at 715 Heritage Drive, and I worked at 3755 Leslie Hamilton Drive. And I want to thank you for voting down the concrete crushing plant. So I had two issues tonight. I want to go back to Commissioner Pfeiffer, he made a comment earlier that said, spit the cart before the, spit the cart before the horse. I think Stageron from Dundee Road to Mr. Schultz's property should be the number one priority before we talk about the proposals on the table today. And I'm not so sure who decided to put the extension from Stageron to intersect with Country Club. To me, which makes more sense is taking Stageron and connecting it to Leslie Hamilton Drive, so it could be a four-way intersection versus a three-way intersection. To me, that makes a little more sense. So, and I got a, just a short little story, I told somebody earlier to say, as I'm on emergency vehicles. My next-door neighbor had a heart attack eight years ago. Had the opportunity to perform CPR. It took the ambulance 1G5 minutes to get to the house in Hamilton Point. The warning says that aging living space or whatever period of time, it seems more like aging die in that facility, for our ambulance and first responders and deathless people in that area, so I endorse that, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Kyle Deuce, we've got Dr. Jeanne Mayall on deck. Jeanne, are you still here? I don't see Jeanne anywhere, so how about Stoltz? Stoltz still here? There's Stoltz. Okay, how about Judith McCain? Judith, are you here? Okay, you're good, she's on deck, all right. Give her your name and address, you have five minutes.
Thank you, sir. My name is Kyle Deuce, and I'm a homeowner in the Gates Lake region at 318 Eolic Circle. Being the youngest homeowner in the Gates Lake region, Mr. Schultz's project has the most long-term impact on me. I was privileged enough to walk the property and see where it's being planned in the first person. The project is nothing short of extraordinary. And I think it will be a great addition to the city and will also help homes that owns on all nearby properties. It is my belief that the impact of this project will not drastically affect our traffic. Of course, studies may be completed, but we must remember that the general area traffic is increasing to an influx of visitors and new homeowners. I was also impressed by the fact that 40% of the land will be dedicated to natural lands and trails. No other developer has been so generous. In addition, the noisy property will be available for walks and outside activities. And for older residents, it allows outdoor exercise opportunities that are safe and appropriate. Mr. Schultz has done a lot with the project and made many concessions to help quell the fears of neighbors and nearby homeowners. I truly believe learning is expanding, and I'd rather have that happen in an organized, planned, eco-friendly manner, respecting the land and nature of Florida. I respectfully request your approval of Mr. Schultz's plans, and thank you for your time.
We've got Judith coming up, we've got Mark McCain next. You still here, Mark? Okay, Judith, give us your name and address for the record, please.
Judith McCain, 315 Hamilton Shore Drive, North East of Winter Haven. I see that my time is being cut, but I want to go on record as being opposed.
You can still have five minutes, that was the point I was trying to make. Even though people were ceding their time, I really can't do it that way. So if you want to speak, feel free, don't feel like you can, so.
Well, I left my speech at my seat, so.
You're right down, sorry.
I left my speech at my seat.
Okay, okay.
I can't add anymore to this, I think everyone has done an artless job, and I want to thank everyone for showing up.
If you want to go get it, we'll wait, because the point of this is for residents to speak. The attorneys are going to talk, and they're going to figure, and I want the residents to speak. Okay. Just so you can. Okay, so Mark, Mac McCain, and Norm Small, are you still here, Norm? You gonna speak? Okay, come up, you're on deck. Mac, give us your name and address, you have five minutes.
My name is Mac McCain, I live with my wife, Katie, who just spoke, at 315 Hamilton Shore Drive, Northeast of Winter Haven. I want to go on record that I am very much opposed to the land request by Mr. Schultz for a number of reasons that I'll state now. Number one, the proposed development of 5-point acre, 5-point units per acre, a total of 400 units, is much greater than the 2.87 average units per acre of the surrounding residential neighborhood. 5.8 units per acre is double the surrounding area, and is in conflict with the comp plan of the city. The proposed density is not compatible with this area. Number two, the request allows the building height of 55 feet. A 55-foot building is not consistent or compatible with the surrounding single-family homes, that's been mentioned. A multi-floor assisted living building housing dozens of residents should be considered like a commercial structure or facility. It will require, as people have pointed out, many of the commercial-type services such as garbage pickup, laundry service, pickup and delivery, food delivery, et cetera, adding significant increase to activity noise and traffic congestion in the residential area. Number three, the request for a total of 40,000 square feet of commercial development is not consistent or compatible with the residential area, as has been pointed out, does not comply with the city's land use plan, comp plan. Currently, there is no commercial uses in the area. The Outback Oasis is not some commercial, but is simply a venue that is liable to hold special events with considerable restrictions. The request for an 8,000-square-foot Outback Oasis-related Neighborhood Activity Center to be built prior to the completion of Stageron connection to Dundee is not acceptable. Neighborhood Activity Center is clearly a commercial facility. To be built to further the Outback Oasis business interest and activities, Mr. Schultz requested, and you heard this, his only change when he was in the county, and he got voted down. The request that he's making now, as is indicated, is much more significant than the one that he made to the county back in 2016. Commercial land use is no, must intersect two collector roads, either existing or proposed. Stageron is neither existing or proposed as a collector road. And there are no plans, that I'm aware of, or funds to approve Stageron from the Schultz property connecting with Dundee Road, which has been a big selling point for this whole effort. If this request is approved, Mr. Schultz can build 400 units and an 8,000-square-foot commercial-type facility before Stageron is connected to Dundee Road. Any and all of that new development will require that the Country Club Road be the primary ingress-degress to the development. An additional and very troubling concern that I have is that Merrick Dassler is voting on these proposals. Mr. Dassler has an interest, as he pointed out, in a large parcel of undeveloped property on Country Club Road, very close to the Schultz property. As he stated, he spoke in favor of the request made by Mr. Schultz in 816, 2016. The county denied that request. Mr. Dassler stands to gain a very positive impact for potential development of the property that he owns or is involved with adjacent to the Schultz property. In my mind, his appearance of a conflict of interest is very strong. In my opinion, Mr. Dassler should decree himself and not vote on these proposals. I am not opposed or against development. However, development must be responsible, compatible, and consistent with the surrounding area, and compatible with the city's comp plan and with land use limitations. In my mind, an acceptable development plan that meets the criteria is a residential development of no more than 207 units, which is basically three units per acre, compatible with the similar surrounding area. And if approved, this land use change will set a significant precedent. And if approved, this land use change will set a significant precedent for similar high-density developments on any undeveloped parcels along Country Club Road, effectively turning a residential area to commercial. Mr. Schultz's request should not be approved and should not be sent forward to the state.
Thank you. We've got Norm Small up. Thank you, Smith, are you still here? Thank you, you're on deck.
Norm Small, twenty-two, in the court. I'm a retired professor at Old State for forty years, retired visiting director of Fairway for forty-five years, and for fifty-two years, a very active member of Fairway. A little bit of patience first, if you will, about the height of proposal change, I speak from the heart about a city I love. After arrival in Fairway fifty-one years ago, on my first attempt at buying groceries at a store that was recommended, I found they were closed on Sunday. And for sixteen more years, they did until they changed. I sat, I shopped on a sandwich next week on my note, and I could only find bagels in the frozen food department, and breakfast bread hadn't been invented yet. And I was through a decade's work of work, and I searched for one of my favorite foods, and I asked a clerk where nuts was, and he sent me to the hardware department. Well, that's when it changed too. And I know Chinese restaurants, on the thing of it, I don't think I ever saw Chinese in my head. And lasagna, I had to eat it at home and cook it myself. But it wasn't just food or restaurants that eventually changed in my city. Cypress Gardens Boulevard, X Men, as you know, the grits were good for movies, and Old State College was still Pope Junior College. Their campuses in four cities, and I know I taught at them all. Add to that, there were few senior homes, fewer assisted living facilities, their complete services, and no towers on the lake view. For my mother, the rain was blistering once. So years later, when my wife and I needed that place for our Asian mothers, and Fairway Solutions had occurred, yes, surely there were towers of faith and buildings to assist, playstations, race stations for the Asians. We did fight with them. Were they comfortable? Yes. Were they complete? I'm not sure. No one possessed the vision that Paul Schultz possesses. I cannot tell you about backfills or buffer zones that are detonated right away, and I wouldn't know the difference between a setback and a call back. But I can tell you about a need where our own mothers, my wife and I, might have needed more, and where future mothers will need. So whether it's lobster rinkles and beer on Sundays or sushi on Saturday, are simply a smarter place to age well. One of the reasons calories that Dan called Outlook Oasis, a community in place for the Asian. It's long a title, but longer a vision. So I thank Mr. Paul Schultz for bringing this to you, remembering my mother all the time. And I thank this group, this consideration, this community for consideration. And I end with a phrase I know that turned out in other deals. I married her fifty-four years ago.
Thank you. We have Thank you, Smith. We have Angela Catani. Angela still here?
Yeah.
You wave, okay. Jeanette Williams, you still here, Jeanette? You can come and you can speak, okay, you can come up, you're on deck. Thank you, give us your name and address, you have five minutes.
Thank you, Smith. My address is twenty-one, twenty-five Westside Hamilton Drive, in Winter Haven, 33881. I will be only repeating things that you've already heard tonight, but I will say this. I, along with Norm Small, am part of the Asian community that still likes to be active. I dodge the trucks and the cars on Westlake Hamilton, I dodge them on Country Club Road, I run, and it's not always a safe place. That changed in the twenty-one years I've lived in that community, right around the corner from the Country Club Road. So adding more trucks to go to serve a community of people that want to live a healthy lifestyle in an Asian community that will accommodate the needs of many, many citizens for our community just is a dream from planes that I've heard Paul talk about in the planes that he's drawn up. So as a bike rider and as an Asian citizen, I ask you to support this proposal.
Jeanette is up. We have Mark Weitzel. Mark, are you still here?
Oh, yeah.
You can speak? Okay, come down. Jeanette, give your name and address, you have five minutes.
I'm Jeanette Williams, I live at 319 Shore's Court, northeast of Hamilton Point. And I just wanted to go as a point record that did share and pay now with the commissioners. And as I was going through some emails, I received the Greater Winter Haven Chamber of Commerce weekly updates first Monday morning. And part of that, as I scrolled down, there was the development news, and then that is the private development map. And so as I was looking at that, I'm very focused, obviously, on not having development there, not opposed to seeing a living and accommodating and making it a great place to age. My mom at this time resides in a nursing home here in Winter Haven. She's been in there three years, ten years before that. My dad was it. He was in my nursing home in Winter Haven as well. So I do understand both of them are stricken with Alzheimer's, and I understand the plight of the elderly and how to accommodate a place for them. My thought is that it doesn't seem like a white place. I understand that he's made provisions for it, and so I just wanted to make aware of the map that is produced and that put out on the private development activities. And so within that, we do see that there's a great deal of construction in Winter Haven. We do see that there's large venues and projects being generated. We do see requests for change in PUDs, and all those changes will affect the areas. But one thing that we don't see is that they're done in rural areas. If you look on the map and you look at the sites that are being developed and the places that they're making those requests, they're not in people's neighborhoods. And that's my point, and I just wanted to add as a point of record toward this map and the information that's on there, to share them on the website for us as individuals to see. They already have the infrastructure in place to do those things. There's a request here for PUD and change for a hotel to be put on Cypress Gardens Boulevard, but the infrastructure is already there, the lights are there, the parking is available, the access is all there, and we understand that. So I would love to see an aging facility, just not in the rural area, especially not on Country Club.
Mark is up. Thank you, Henry, he's still here?
Yeah.
Come forward. You're on deck. Mark, give us your name and address, you have five minutes.
Mark was forty, twenty-two, Country Club Road. I've lived there with my wife, Deborah, and my handicapped son, Noah. Our home is twenty-five feet from Outback Oasis. In nineteen ninety-seven, we built our dream home there on one acre of lot. The zoning was R-01. We never dreamed that we would be fighting for our peace, not only once at the county level, but twice here at the city level. The county commission voted that commercial use in that area is not compatible and should not be allowed. Since Mr. Schultz has bought the property next to us, we have endured countless hours of equipment under dump trucks banging, broadband splitting, and an ongoing lawsuit. Yes, Mr. Schultz, that's due. All we want is peace and quiet. This will never happen with the commercial use next to us, a use that county has already said is non-compatible. The wife and I built our dream home on Country Club Road to enjoy the open area and the country center, and to be left alone. You guys are the gatekeepers. You are the ones that are supposed to protect the working ethic. Just think of commercial use was twenty-five feet from your home, a hundred feet from your living room. I think you like it. Commercial use in R-01 zoning is not compatible. Again, I bought and built there for the country center and the peace and quiet that it brings. For that reason, I oppose this proposal, and I thank you for your time. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
We have Danny Hip up. We have Carrie Harrington. Is she still up, Carrie? Is she here? Carrie? Give her your name and address, she's got five minutes.
Okay. Danny Hip, twenty-fifty Buckoutland Road. Lived there for thirteen years now, worked there for about thirty-one years, watched it grow, moved out there for the reason being it was kind of cruel. And so I bought some property to build my house on, great for kids, way from the city. We're not really too far from the city, but we're far enough away to enjoy life, and our tranquility and quietness in our surroundings. So I think seeing more rooftops, tall buildings, we already hear the noise from over there on Friday or Saturday night, you can sit there and pour, just listen to all the music playing today. My main concern about all this development in our area is what I have to deal with every day. Every day, it's a daily issue to try and get out of our driveway. You can't turn left out of our driveway today. I mean, there's no way. You've got to turn right, but I was, because he's actually a neighbor, to get back to take a ride on the road. We have five kids, I have one of them driving now. It scares me every time he pulls out the driveway. We had to put a gate up to keep our animals in because we had, it wasn't so developed. And also, we have so much traffic, people seem like they're cutting through there, get from one side down the other, and we ended up losing some dogs out there. The school's there now, it's a thirty-five mile an hour speed zone. We can't get the people to slow down for the kids to go to school. We don't even allow our eleven-year-old daughter to walk from our house, which is probably two-hundred yards to her bus stop, by herself, because of traffic. These people, it's crazy. We have cops out there, every morning, keep traffic slowed down so we can get through. It's a daily issue. I think that the town at work, Trump Road is the next, is the new government, where it's going to stay off of Dundee Road, if you can't get down Dundee Road in the morning, I don't know what this new road project is going to do for us, because it's not, you might go start getting down Dundee Road, but you can't even turn left on Country Club, off of Country Club, on the Buckoutland now. You can't turn left or right while you're out there without someone coming up on you. We have accidents, frequent accidents, right in front of our driveway, people trying to get into Buckoutpoint. I mean, it's just, it's non-stop. There's always an accident, or you're always hearing wheels squeal. You know, so we definitely oppose this. We're not interested in anyone's out there. The reason we bought there is because it's rural. We want to keep it rural. I don't need any more, you know, any more cars that my kids might have to be concerned about, because I got four more coming up that's simple to drive. So, you know, and I just think that if you guys put yes on this, your voting will change the way my children are being raised right now, because they enjoy the outdoors, that they're very active. And with that said, I deeply oppose it. Thank you.
Carrie is up. And we have Cheryl for Indiana Tenor. Cheryl, you still here? Okay, you're on deck. Carrie, give us your name and address, you have five minutes.
All right. My name is Carrie Nurrington. I live at nine-five-zero Fourteenth Street Northeast. I work in the elder care industry. I am also one of the co-founders and current chair of H1 Winter Haven, but I also grew up on Country Club Road, and my parents still live there. I was probably one of those people, and still sometimes am. I ride my bike from my current house on Fourteenth Street to my parents' house on Country Club Road, and I've run along those, all around those curves as well. But I would like to say that I both personally and professionally am in huge support of this development project. I think it'd be great. I think the way that it is envisioned allows for a lot of, a lot less impact than I think people are concerned about. I think that potentially, the people that would love and could afford and want to live in a place like this are people who have the same values as the residents that currently live on Country Club Road. And I think just like to have friends in the current developments that have been put up on Country Club Road, you could have friends in this residence as well. I think it could become a community environment that people could all use, and use the trails, and maybe I would run those trails instead of Country Club Road. I think that Paul Schultz has done a great job landscaping the area that he's already done, and because of the proof that he's put into that, and his personal experience with dementia and elder care, I am fully faithful that he would find a good partner to work with that would honor the different things that value, the people in his community value, and ensure that it is done well and respectfully to the neighbors. So.
We have Mike Robinson on deck. Mike, are you still here? You're up next. You're up, give your name and address, you have five minutes.
Cheryl Strang, one-one-nine-zero-Wesley-Campus-Dry. And first, I want to say I support Paul's project. I've been out and looked at it, and feel that it fits a need for Winter Haven. My son and daughter-in-law are big cyclists, and they have ridden a ladder, which I'll bring to you all. As community stakeholders, we have the need to support the efforts of Paul Schultz in developing his property into the lush and landscaped, age-restricted community envisioned. Aside from the fact that he has already established style, as an epic, beautifully-designed Outback Oasis, we believe this to be a unique opportunity to choose a well-thought-out development over the most recent tract house-style neighborhoods with minimal landscaping requirements being developed just on the street from the subject property. In addition, we see few options for high-quality assisted living facilities in our immediate area. Paul's plan fills a niche and attracts those with dollars to spend in Winter Haven. As avid cyclists, we have the need to enjoy frequent rides down Country Club Road. They look forward to an additional stretch of paved, real landscape road in the area with bike lanes. According to the Bureau for Labor Statistics, about ninety percent of households between fifty-five and sixty-five own a car, declining to eighty-one percent for the seventy-five and older group. These stats suggest fewer cars on the road than if the subject property is developed into a non-age-restricted, restricted community. As an increased number of vehicles on the road is the unavoidable result of an ever-increasing population, we prefer a proposal which suggests fewer vehicles. In conclusion, we have the need to support Paul in his efforts to thoughtfully develop the subject property. Thank you.
Okay, we have Mike, and we have Larry Mitchell.
My name's Mike Robinson.
Anything else to say? Larry, are you still here, or here?
Mitchell?
Okay. Curtis Flanders, did you want to speak? Come down and sign your name and address, so give us your name and address, you have five minutes.
My name's Mike Robinson. I live on ten-ninety Wesley Hamilton Drive. Have a question for you guys. Did Andy read the letter this morning, Mr. Dancler? Mr. Dancer, did any of y'all read the ledger this morning? The headline article was, "Pulp County is the fifth most deadliest county in the area for pedestrians." This isn't in the state. This is in the entire country. I ride, I jog, I go down that road a bunch. To me, when I see something like that, I see all the developments, wondering what he's doing, trying to improve this. I mean, you put in great trails, you've made a lot of improvements. But you look at things, and it's just, how do we get to this? How are we the fifth worst in the entire, the entire country? I'll tell you how we get to it. It's a lot of bad decisions, a lot of bad decisions. You've got a busy road, a buggy road, which is going to be a commercial road. We have Country Club Road, which is a residential road. Common sense says, all the people for him say that eventually, maybe, one day, we might hook it to W Road. That's great. I'm not opposed to nursing homes. I'm not opposed to all this stuff. I'm opposed to commercial property in a residential area. I don't understand why, I'm a business person. I don't understand why you guys don't look at this way. Let's make him bring something to the table. Let's say, hey, I want you first to promise you're going to connect it to W Road, a commercial area. Just seems like common sense. But instead, he's going to start it right at Country Club Road. There's zero guarantees that he's going to ever connect this to W Road. Zero guarantees. He might, if it's in his interest, if it's financially suitable. I just tell you, let's go forth, let's not make Pulp County the most deadly for pedestrians. Let's vote against this. Let's make him bring something to the table. That's safe for everyone. I mean, he can have something for this, but let's bring it from a busy road. Let's not bring it to a residential area. I ask you to vote against this.
So Curtis is our last person to sign up to speak. That doesn't mean you can't speak if you haven't already. So if you'd like to speak now, and you did not sign up, please come forward. There's a sheet down here that Joy will sign up, and you're welcome to take your five minutes. Curtis, give your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
My name is Curtis Flanders, 444 Avenue, my office. I just wanted to say that I used to do welding. I gave up my job as a welder to serve Winter Haven in different areas. I worked with faith-based missions, nonprofit education centers. I am the recreation activity director for the Public Education Partnership. I've spent time in Florence Villa, Inwood. And I just wanted to say that, you know, I spent time with Bob Burner, the Museum of Winter Haven History. You know, I really care about Winter Haven and where we're going. I would say that I'm in favor of Paul Schultz's Outback Oasis and the expansion on it for the, for the city as a whole, you know. I have to get to 5:30 in the morning, but I stayed here to make sure that I know what the outcome of all this is. And I am in favor. Thank you.
You're next. Give your name and address, you have five minutes.
Judy Cleaves, bubble through, like married to her son in Winter Haven. I'll just take a moment, but I had to get up here and say that I am in favor of Paul's project. I'm tired, I wasn't realistic. I understand concerns about neighborhoods and values. But I know too that we're an aging population, and I am one of those. And we're not talking so much about nursing homes. And so it's lifestyle for some of us who may want to live in an area where we can gradually go from independent living to care and eventually a lot of care. So I like what Paul has proposed. He has a lot of vision, he's landscaped beautifully, everything he's done, and all of you have been complimentary about that. But I think our community is ready to have this. We don't have anything like this anywhere around. That's a good talk about nature groups, so I support this.
Okay, give your name and address for the record, you have five minutes.
Ava Holliday, 4018 Country Club Road South. And I must say, I feel a little responsible for this meeting. Because it was my family estate where Outback Oasis is now. And I promise you, if I could believe Paul Schultz's promises of that he would never develop, we would have never sold the property. I've been promised that he was going to make trails for me to ride my horses on back there. I've been promised all sorts of things that he's never lived up to. So be careful what Paul promises unless it's in writing, and it's legal. I regret that we ever sold him the property, and I oppose this 100%.
You're okay, give your name and address, you have five minutes.
Dawn Young, 2150 Kendall Lane, Winter Haven. I really hate that I have to go after her, because I liked everything she just said. I just want to make it known that I'm opposing it too, because I just feel like with everything that's already been said, you know, common sense and like compatibility thing comes into play. You know, you can't, that that road come out, the connector on Sage Road on a curve is so dangerous. How do they think anyone will ever be able to, with turn lanes, turn left out there onto Country Club Road? Doesn't make sense to me. And then having the connector roads where they don't even exist before you could have developed is silly. So I just wanted to demonstrate that I'm opposed to. Thank you.
Anybody else? Pete, give your name and address. You're up.
Sure. Pete Guev, Hamilton Point, resident tonight. I know it's been a long night, and we've got one more case on the agenda. I did have a couple of questions, and if I were not accusing myself, I'd ask them from up there, try to figure this out. The Neighborhood Activities Center policy says, and we've heard this numerous times, that have to have intersecting roads, collector roads proposed or existed before you can have Neighborhood Activities Center. Sage Road is a local road, 21-foot wide, of which doesn't resist damaging to the end of the road which Paul Schultz owns. The rest of the road is on the Country Club Road. Paul's proposal is a 60-foot wide away to the end of his property. There's still 1,500 feet of 21 feet of right-of-way that is privately owned. And my question is, how do we approve something that Paul Schultz doesn't control, the city doesn't control, the county doesn't control? It's owned by private residents on either side of this 21-foot right-of-way. Do we make it a 60-foot wide collector road? Or we can then send this thing to the state and ask the state to approve it? That's one question I have. The second question I have is, I didn't hear it tonight, so I'm hopefully not repeating this, but the traffic engineers are here. And my way back, and I've done this work for 21 years, as a fact. In 97, Merle hired me as a lot of planners for Pulp County. I've heard the traffic engineer, Representative Paul, in his traffic study analysis that's in the fact sheet references this Country Club Road. My question is, would Sage Road ever study if it were ever built? As far as, because staff references in the fact sheet that part of their conclusion says that Sage Road would have birthed traffic off of Country Club Road. Well, how do they do that if it's never been built? And how can they determine that if it's never been built? So it was going to have birthed traffic off of Country Club? How much traffic would have added to Country Club? And was the traffic study included in the report? Pedestrian, 146-page application that said Sage Road, anything about Sage Road or traffic counts or anything related to Sage Road? So it's a big question for me. I ask myself also, this is an old rotary phrase, but will this be beneficial to all concerned? And I take it that if you lived in this area, it wouldn't be beneficial to you. If you're a part of the Country Club or a part of the greater Winter Haven Chamber, it may be beneficial to you, because Paul's a good guy, and I'm not here to count Pauls. Five years ago, I met with Paul on this property. And it's just like Dr. King mentioned. His plan five years ago was to build a house between two lakes, of which he man-made. So I ask myself, what changed? Because to go from building your personal house to expanding the Outback Oasis, to have refrigerators and amenities, now you're at six units of acre, 10 acres of commercial, of which our complaint says you've got to have intersecting roads or collector? How do we get there? I missed the vote somewhere in my 20 years of planning and development. I'm not opposed, as all of you know, I've built houses for like, I'm not opposed to development. If they came and said, all right, look, RE is our city, as you heard from the attorney, RE is our land, is this compatible? Had 40,000 square foot, one unit per acre with the county R-01. When you build the trees and buffering, and JP, you know this better than probably any of them up there. You've run a tiny commission, you've heard this multiple times. You can buffer anything you want and call it compatible. That's what Merle gets paid a lot of money to take as a staff member. But Merle doesn't mark to, Merle doesn't live in Winter Haven. And I'm not knocking Merle for living in the bar, that's his right. Merle's been doing this for 30-plus years, had a lot of knowledge, a lot of experience. You heard from staff, they recommended approval of a rock crushing plant earlier tonight. That they'd recommend approval for, and said it was compatible. You got denied for compatibility. So I asked you to put yourself in my shoes and the other people in this room that came out tonight and the ones that left, and say, would you like to see it across the street from your house? Right, you live on five acres, or close to it, to a county. You know, I don't know that anybody would like to see a 45 or 55-foot building across the street from their house. And when I met five years ago with Paul, it wasn't something that I dreamed of where I thought you were going to build this house on this big, this property. I don't know what changed. But in order for you to make an intelligent decision tonight, you have to follow the policies in the complaint. And our very own policy says, no collector road, no Neighborhood Activities Center. Whether it's proposed, that may be one thing. But you can't tell me that that road is proposed when it's a 21-foot little road in the county. And I'll leave you with that for a second time.
Okay.
My name's Barbara Harrington. I live at 2801 Country Club Road North. I do work with elderly, and I had a chance to go with Paul and take a tour of the property. And I'll tell you what has changed. People are asking, his mom had Alzheimer's. He had to find a place for his mom, and he found an incredible place. And I think that was beginning his dream. And, you know, I just think this is an amazing property. It could be an amazing place for people to come. It would be a destination community. You know, and who comes? Their kids come here to visit. Their kids take Family Medical Leave Act and come here to stay for weeks. They don't want to move their parent north, they want to come here. And where do they go eat? They're going to go eat at Donner Bell's. You know, it's, it's a good thing all the way around. I think the problems that are expressed can be managed, and I think that this project deserves a chance. I think that no place else offers something like this where people can have a chance to walk these trails, go out and see the sunset. We do have facility, facilities here, but you have to think, which one do you want your mom in? There are several that you don't. So this could be a really unique opportunity to create a really fantastic environment here in Ford.
All right, so now we're going to go back to our duly attorneys. Do you guys have one more hand, or are you through? Nope, anything else? You're standing up? Nope, I don't want to cut anybody off, but I'm just trying to make sure that everybody has an opportunity. So if you're, okay. All right, gentlemen, we have a motion on the floor, and we have heard other testimony. I'm going to now close the public committee and reopen the City Commission meeting.
Mr. Mayor, before y'all vote, I just want to also make clear for the record that you will provide, have to provide to the city clerk copies of any communications that you receive from individuals or whatever constituents and what have. She's going to conclude that as part of the minutes for investigating more of the workshop agenda that we did at, I wouldn't say that week. So just putting that up there for the record to make sure that you all provide that to the city clerk, either part of the court or, um, the gentleman.
Okay. Questions, comments, questions, questions?
I have a packet of emails I've received, I've printed them out. I've also received a couple of phone calls, I've come on some call me, and also received conversation. And one solicited from Lori Edwards regarding this matter, they both oppose the project. And, but like I said, there were solicited contacts. The rest of my contacts have received, and I've read this stack of emails. I'll just pass it down. Go ahead and put it in the record. Let's get it all cleaned up. Go ahead and do it. I've heard, I think I'm ready to go ahead.
I've received, excuse me, several phone calls, but unfortunately, the calls that I got, I was driving, so I couldn't write no names or anything down, so some people did call.
Mr. Powell?
I've received, I don't know how many emails, and I have four as well to City Manager, Assistant City Manager, Mr. Bishop, Murphy, and to a city clerk, and assistant city clerk. So they have them all on record as well. I just have a couple of comments and questions I need to find out. Merle, isn't it in there, or is it, could it be put in there, that Sage Road needs to be completed before the first wave? Is there a turn? Or anything?
Sage Road would have, it's, the proposal is to build Sage Road as the project is built, rather than building that whole length of Sage Road into this property. So it would be built as the project is being built, is the way it's proposed. And the restrictions would be that there would be no retail commercial development within the Neighborhood Activities Center until such time as the Sage Road is completed all the way to W Road. And that retail development is limited to probably 4,000 square feet, or 10% of the total square footage. But the Sage Road is not, you can require it, I mean, that can be the change. But right now, the proposal is Sage Road will be built by the developer, but it'll be phased as the project is built.
Look, keep in mind, Mr. Powell, that that's really part of the, the.
I understand, but I'm just asking the question. And it was brought up about the response time for EMS and emergency vehicles to the, to the proposed site. I don't know what, what the response time would be or anything like that. That's something that needs to be considered. And I know there's nothing we have in control, but I don't know what the response time would be from, and where the response could be made from. But that's something that, you know, but, but I need.
Merle, I've got a question for you. The, I've heard, I heard you recently, one was, one unit per acre, and the other is four units per acre, depending upon various zones and, three units per acre, I'm sorry, about 200 homes versus 70 homes, if it's a 70-acre developer, versus 210 or whatever. Do you understand?
Do you understand what I'm asking? You know, if this doesn't go forward and then they go through with just a traditional neighborhood, home, neighborhood, it's 200 units or is it 70? What's the?
Currently, the land use, the county's land use is residential load, which allows up to five units per acre. That's under their conference plan. However, the county's land development code has designated this as residential load one, which is a subset. Now, the best way to explain that is the residential load one is tent about two zoning. But the county has a one-mapped system, so it's all the same nomenclature. However, in certain districts, because of the expansive densities or intensities, they created sub-districts. I haven't noticed, I wrote the code again. So in this case, it's residential load one, which is one unit per acre. However, because the residential load, future land use, allows up to five units per acre, you have the ability, if you meet certain density bonus requirements, such as proximity to a collector road or access to collector road, proximity to other amenities, you can get density bonus points. Well, we did that calculation just to see. So you could go, it requires a public hearing, but it only requires a public hearing before the planning commission and get a PUD approval up to the five units per acre maximum that the county allows. But right now, it's one unit per acre, which would be 70 units. The most closest land use that we have, that the city has to apply to this, is residential load. However, our residence, the city's residential load goes from two units per acre to 10 units per acre. I guess that's the difference between a county's environmental situation versus a city, because the city typically allows for more density. So therefore, what we're being asked to do tonight is to transmit a conference plan amendment to apply a residential load, future land use, to property that had a residential load county land use. But the density is different. The closest zoning district that we would have, which would be consistent with the zoning districts of the subdivisions that are there now, is R1, looking at Shond and Murphy and Ramon, which allows up to three units per acre.
That's where you guys, that's where, that's where the three units.
That's where the three units comes into. So that would be three times 70.
200 units.
Well, over 200 units. So, and based upon what the traffic engineer recorded in his traffic study, is that the traffic from this development for over 55 is actually less than the traffic generated from a typical single-family subdivision with families living there, with children and all the traffic generated from that. And that, and that traffic analysis is based upon multiple studies that's done for similar type of locations in terms of getting those rates. And the traffic analysis looked at, in the way to identify traffic associated with a road that's not there, that would be proposed road, is called traffic model. So you would plug in, what the old state road is there. What then does that do to expect the traffic movements within the area? And I guess what I'm saying is, because the document was made about the policy, the conference plan, the transportation element conference plan, does recognize that Sage Road connection is a future connection. It is, it is a desired future road or proposed road. And we use that, use that in terms of applying the policy for the location of neighborhood activity centers. I mean, there are proposed roads on transportation master plans where there's no record right now. But it is a proposed road in terms of, it is the intent of the local government to acquire the right-of-way or to somehow forge, put any number of it. And that was one, I believe, was identified on the city's transportation element conference plan, where it shows that Sage Road connection being actually being managed.
All right. So I just want to make a couple of comments and then we'll take a vote. First of all, I understand where your points come from. I understand this. I, I, I lived in Winter Haven 70 years ago. My family has property out on Country Club Road, which I have no ownership interest in at all. And I was the best use of that property as exactly what it is now. That's just a general farm, a ranch. Cannot be developed. So this thing that I've been hearing about, we're going to make all this money. My family is not the case because it will never be a subdivision. It cannot be developed. It's web and it's never going to be a subdivision. But I understand, I had a house in Hamilton Point. I built a home in there. And I, I know that neighborhood very well. I was about 50% complete to the neighborhood when I built a home in there. So I love it out there and I love Country Club Road. We were going out there long before any of these subdivisions were ever built. So I know that road as well as anybody. And I can't get past the fact of the traffic. And, you know, Danny Yip, it's a friend of mine, made a great point about the traffic. And there is less traffic. And if you have Sage Road, you know, I'm somebody who cuts through all these back roads because I've done Winter Haven probably as well as anybody. I cut through back roads all the time and boy, the traffic and I'm pretty good at it. And my entire life, I've always wanted Sage Road to be able to connect northeast where maybe to southeast where maybe that's a collector road. And the only way we're going to get that is through this subdivision, is through this department. I mean, it's through this, because the last thing that they said over here is, if we don't approve this, we will not get this connector road. And so think about it, 210 houses, and Hamilton Point has 100. So you're talking about two times as many homes. It could be a big housing development, could be, who knows what it could be. But then there'd be no road going to Dundee Road and you'd have all of that traffic for 200 more homes on Country Club Road. And in spite of whatever, whatever we feel about development, the property is going to be developed. Bradco property is probably going to be developed at some point. We can't stop these, everybody from trying to develop their land. And Mr. Schultz has been acquiring this property and going through the process of meeting with our planners and our zoning people. They're trying to do the right thing by incorporating the, you know, the city planners and what he's trying to do. But I think that.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just interrupt you for a second. When we get to the quasi-judicial hearing on the zoning.
That's what you want to hear, my opinions?
Yes, and because I want you to hear all of the comments and testimony.
Well, I just want to clear the record. I understand, but I want to clear the record that I don't have any ownership in, that's what started all this property that we have on Country Club Road. That's my mom's property and.
But these comments that you made, I'm certainly reflecting on your support for the transmittal of this land use ordinance. But we all know that we're going to give more when it comes back.
Even on the day, I will shut up. But let's go ahead. If there's anything, we call a motion. Okay, we have a motion. Although the motion indicates a same and I oppose, motion passes.